Yeah, it's it's not the end of the world probably, I don't know, it's. Uh, but yeah, I don't know.
It was surreal.
This one?
And there's like a farmer, they're interviewing the farmer.
It's rolling, yeah. Good morning, welcome to commission meeting this morning, Monday, the twenty fifth of April, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, we will proceed with a prayer from Dan Jesson, and then I will lead the pledge of allegiance. So we'll go from there.
Our heavenly father, we're grateful for all of our blessings, we're grateful for this county that we live in, for the beauty that is here, for the people that are here that make it such a good place. We're grateful for the recent moisture we've been able to receive and pray that we may continue to receive moisture to help us with this drought that we are dealing with. We ask that we might be able to do the best we can today, we might have wisdom and knowledge to do the best we can to govern the affairs of Iron County and and that those that live in it will continue to be blessed as we say and pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, um, can we, we'll go ahead and get a couple of motions on approval of these minutes. Uh, there's the fourteenth and then the twenty-eighth, do we need to do those separately?
You can do them together.
Okay. Can I get a motion for those two?
I'd move for approval, the minutes of our meetings from March fourteenth and March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye, aye? Okay, very good, um, can we get approval of claims?
I'll move to approve the claims for payment from March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two through April twenty-fourth, twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye, aye? Very good, alright, well, we'll go on to reports and can we have Carsten?
Commission?
Good morning.
Um, a couple of things we've got going on, we're kind of, you know, deep into our assessment role, we're getting ready to roll, and so that's a pretty tremendous effort to get to that, to that point. Um, you know, I was thinking about the, the, our, our office and each individual person and really, um, how much, how valuable each person is in our office, there's, um, there's a lot of work to do and each individual person in our office, um, is, really puts in a tremendous effort, I think, um, I think you, you all should know that, and I think the, the county, obviously, this is a public meeting, but the county should know that too, um, I want to highlight a couple, a couple of different people. We're in a couple of different things that are happening, so we're transitioning to Puma right after the, the role, the assessment role, and that is, that is an incredible effort, it takes, um, a lot of time because we're moving, we're, we're transferring, um, camera systems, we're transferring systems from the system we're on now to, to Puma, which is a cloud-based system, and it's, it's very time-intensive. And, and so Trevor Mattson has kind of led that effort, it's been a, a huge effort on top of the workload that he has, um, he's, he's really, he's really put a lot of time into, you know, coming in late, coming in on the weekends to, to making sure that that happens and that happens efficiently so that we're not scrambling, anytime you change, you know, an entire system, there's lots of issues that come up and we anticipate some issues, but, um, hopefully because of him, it's going to be a pretty seamless transition, so I'm really proud of Trevor, he works really, really hard, um, very, very intelligent. Um, he's also, uh, we've got the state tax commission downstairs, um, working on our assessment role, um, in our sales ratio study, he's over the sales ratio study, it's a, it's complicated and it's challenging and he's tasked with it and he, and he does it, so, and so that's what's going on there, those are the, probably the two biggest things we, we have, I want to quickly tell you about, um, I think one of the hard things to do is to be judicious about how you spend money and use money, um, we all have that, that same issue. I did decide to send Kendall Allen in conjunction with RIT department to a conference in New Orleans, and of course, that costs the county money, it, taxpayers are basically paying for that trip, and, and I, I felt like it was a, a, a good use of taxpayer money, um, Kendall's exceptional, we all know that.
We all know that.
He's really an incredible, incredible person, um, I feel like it was a good use of county money, he came back, we're going to make lots of changes to our, our GIS system that will directly affect our office, uh, well, not lots of changes, we're going to take, make a few changes to our GIS system that, that are really going to be helpful, and so I just wanted to report back that, you know, sometimes you spend money and doesn't work out, and sometimes it does, and I think in this situation, it will, it will work. Um, and so I'm thankful to, to Kendall for, you know, going down there and certainly would have been a totally inefficient use of the county's time and money if I, I would have went, we got nothing out of it if I would on there, but fortunately, it was him and not me, so. Another quick thing, um, we, we are getting, we've added so many parcels and our office really is busy. We, we probably will need to backfill, not probably, we will need to backfill the, the assistant position at some point this coming year, and I just want to make you aware of that. Um, the, the, you know, we're the beehive state, but that office is really a beehive of activity and, and we're going to need to backfill that position, um, at some point, so I will, you know, just, just to keep you abreast of what's going on there. Uh, other than that, that's kind of what's taking place in our, our department, and if you have any questions, let me know.
There was a post on Facebook about your DMV gals and they are very kind. Years ago, and probably people remember that there, there was a couple of ladies there that were not very kind, they were quite ornery ladies, but the girls that are there now are sweet, they are so helpful, they are very, very good.
They're a good group, Tara's exceptional, she's a great supervisor and we're thankful for her, so.
She did all you guys do, Carsten, she did a great job.
Yep. Okay, we'll move to Jared. First of all, he's up here helping us get our computers going because there was a power outage and they kind of messed them up, I'll put mine and mine's good.
Yeah, we decided to play favorites and we'd let yours stay, stay well, and everybody else could struggle for a little bit, but, yeah, because of that, I don't have a fun little presentation for you, so more just, just give you some information of what's going on, and then if you guys have questions, feel free to ask, so. So budget-wise, for the first quarter, we're looking really good, um, I always have one light item that's, that's just, gets dissolved real fast, and that's our software maintenance. Everything is due right at the very beginning, so other than that, everything else is right on schedule, budget-wise, so we're doing really well there. I did a quick look at our workload and just seeing the work orders that are coming through, um, last year, we averaged about two hundred and seventy work orders per, per month, and we're averaging first quarter this year, we're averaging about three hundred, so, so our work orders are up considerably for the, for this first quarter, so. We'll see how it continues to pan out for the rest of the year, I'm assuming it's, it's going to keep at that level, so. Uh, as far as projects go, we just got through the big Spelman update, um, that ran really quite smoothly, better than we've seen most. So it transitioned really well, as part of that update, there's a secondary update as well, which is called a geo-validation. Um, it, it ties in all the GIS and the mapping in with nine-one-one and with the maps of the public, public safety uses. So that was a challenge, it took a lot of time, but we got it up and going and, and it's, looks like it's going to be a lot, a lot better than the old, older version. So we're pretty excited about that. The other big project we're working on right now, and I've gotten, I've gotten kind of a soft quote back on it right now, is for a new phone system. As you guys are aware, our phone system is pretty, pretty old right now, so we've got to either update it or do something new, and that's what I'm working on right now, I'm, I should be getting a second, kind of a soft quote back on that soon, in about a week or two is what I'm hoping. And then I'm trying to find a third company, but right now, I'm not able to find a third company, so we might just end up with just two quotes, so we'll see, and then we'll go, from there, we'll go for an RFP or or out to bid or whatever, but I just wanted to get an idea, and of course, I'll visit with you guys and with Dan, he's really good to, to do that, because that's not in the budget for two thousand and twenty-two. We kind of visited about that in two thousand and twenty-one, we were getting ready to do two thousand and twenty-two budget stuff, so, but we just didn't remember, so we thought we'd leave it out, tackle it as it comes, so.
Are we using, were she using Shoretail right now, right?
Shoretail right now.
Oh, is, is that, are they still in the running, are they good?
Well, no, because Shoretail's out of business, so Mitel bought them out, and now, um, Ring Central's actually buying Mitel out.
Wow.
Which is the reason for this huge delay, I started this project right at the very, very beginning of the year.
Wait till everything shakes out?
Yeah, and so there was promotions, everything else with all the new companies and changing hands all the time, so. So basically, our big player right now is, is probably going to be either Ring Central or South Central here locally. So those are the two that we're getting the quotes from, I deal with a third-party vendor called Walcom, and they can support like two or three different phone systems. But the one that they're recommending is Ring Central, so.
We replace the equipment, we have to replace phones and everything?
Uh, and there's an option too for cloud-based, so then we don't actually have onsite hardware, so which can come out beneficial or it may not?
Is it headset or in your computer or what?
No, so, so cloud-based just means that it runs, like right now, we have, um, we have a device at every building location that runs the phones. We do away with that, all we have to do is just run them through our switches, they hit a server wherever they store their servers at, it routes all the phone calls. So it's a complete internet-based, fiber-based system, so, yeah. Yeah, still have your phone you're going to pick up, there is actually an option though, it's pretty cool, I, I want to try it in our office, but where you can get rid of your, your desk phone altogether and just use your computer strictly to answer phones, so.
Wow.
But it's kind of newer, and they're telling me it's not the most stable, so.
Oh.
So if anybody's going to do it, we'll be the guinea pigs and try it and see if we can save money on handsets, so.
That'd be good.
So, that'd be good if we can, but. Anyway, those are really kind of the two big, big items. Oh, I piggyback on what Carson was just saying too, that, that was a really good conference for Kendall to go to, he, he, he learned a ton, but it's kind of opened my eyes as well, and we're, Kendall's really great, but there's only one of him, and as he's starting to open up the eyes and showing all the departments everything that they can do with it, we're probably getting pretty close to, to where we may need to find some additional help for Kendall, or we might just, just workload him right into the ground, so.
Yeah.
We'll keep an eye on it, Kendall and I have been visiting about that, but it's good too for the other elected officials to know that we're starting to spread him really thin and he might not get the.
I know, if they find out how good he was and use him like crazy, he's, that, that's been a great addition to the county, he has been really, Kendall's really good, so.
Anyway, any questions, I'm glad to answer any of them.
Good, thanks Jared, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, our treasurer, Nicole. I know.
Wow. Thank you. I sound better than I feel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so our office, of course, we're, I think everyone is just busy, I think our county is growing and it's just, it's keeping us all really hopping, so. Um, we're of course, working on May tax sale right now and have a lot going on, but I'll go through my money first, so. Um, first paper I gave you is our product sales, it just shows, you know, what we've collected. Our, and of course, this is our little bit lower time to be collecting, um, personal property is just kind of starting to pick up a little bit. Um, so Nicole is busy collecting that, and that's been.
Nicole, can you pull that mic down just a little bit?
That's been a really, um, good change, I think, hopefully Carsten agrees um, that we've added like a lot of separation to personal property, so they're putting value on, we're collecting. And then August in the auditor's office, she's putting all the abatements on, so it's kind of nice, we've never really had that separation before, and so um, that would make our state auditor super happy, and it's just, it's, I, I feel like it's been a really good change for us, so we're glad to have that happening. Um, our tax distribution, that paper's just, just the taxes that come for Iron County, it's not for the entities, so we're just at one point two million since January, um, hoping we can get our delinquent bills out and kind of get that picking up a little bit. And then, of course, it will increase as personal property comes in also. Um, our pool cash report, we're doing super good with our cash. Um, been working a little bit with Morton about maybe moving some more over to them and doing a little bit more investing with them since their rate is still a little bit better. Our rate with PTIF, last time I reported was at point three-six and it's up to point five-two, so it is increasing. And they're of course feeling that will continue to increase, which is good for me because then we earn more interest, bad for Dan. Um, so it's kind of one of those double-edged swords for us, so. Um, but before, of course, I do any more investing with Morton, I'll get with Dan just to determine our cash needs and make sure that we're good to add some additional funds in there. Um, we've been working with the data center, we just had a demo with them, um, to start having them email tax notices. So they're going to start collecting email addresses and start emailing notices, they have a way to verify that it's been received, that it's been opened, so we can have that verification. That's one thing in our Tyler system, we have not been able to verify that they've received it and they've opened it. So that way, where we have a way to verify, we can start, of course, not this year, but in years going forward, not sending paper notices, just emailing, and that will save us quite a bit of money, they're really struggling to get enough paper this year. She said they're just ordering and ordering, so they're hopefully going to have enough to print everyone's tax notices, but of course, cost of paper, cost of envelopes, everything is going up, it's just crazy that we have all these shortages, but um, we're hoping that in going forward, that will save us because of course, we won't have to pay postage, the paper costs, any of that, and the cost to email is significantly lower than the paper, so we're hoping. And of course, that's the way the world is trending, younger people that are buying homes, they, they do not want paper, they want to do everything online. They want to pay us online, they want to change their address online, they want everything to happen online, and so, so we are trying to keep up with the world trend, so I really think that'll be a super addition. Um, our outstanding taxes to date are around six million, just a little bit over, which is kind of where we were last year. Um, of course, you know, we have one really large outstanding, and if that were to be paid, our outstanding would just be barely over one million, so we're, we're holding okay, and you know, if we could just get that one resolved. Um, we did get a scanner from State Bank that's in our vault, so we can scan our deposits in now instead of having to go to the bank. So we've been using it quite a bit, um, Luke in Dan's office has been using it quite a bit. Um, the clerk has, i- if they don't have cash, they've been trying to come in and use it, so saves running to the bank and, and time, you know, that you're sitting there in line, so we're hoping that, that will be a good addition too. Uh, for our May tax sale, we have a hundred and fifty-five properties left, ten of those are campsites. Um, we only have three structures left and they're all single wide trailers. So we're happy to not have any, you know, big homes, one of, um, one of the owners has sixty-eight properties, so sixty-eight of those hundred and fifty-five are all the same person, so.
Wow.
We're wishing we could get him to pay and then that would really significantly drop our sale. Um, my budget is super good, of course, I spent all my money at the end of the year, so, so I'm doing really well on my budget.
They can pay right up to the sale?
Yeah.
So they could come in?
Right, right until ten o'clock when the sale starts, so. And then once the sale starts, it's, it's too late, so, but we've, Melanie does a super good job with our tax sale. We're only required by law to prove that we have mailed out certified and regular mail, but we hunt them down on being verified, we call title companies, she goes to every extreme to, I mean, we never want to sell anyone's property, we go to every extreme to make sure they have been notified and that they know and, and try to get the information out any way we can, and I really appreciate, she goes to all efforts to try to track people down, and so she does a super good job.
She doesn't have to do any of it.
Yeah, she doesn't.
And that's it, yeah.
Because it technically is an auditor's duty, we're just supposed to say, here's the properties that go to tax sale, but we've always worked, you know, with them and it's been a little bit easier, where we're the ones that have to print the bills anyway, and so we've, we've always been happy to um, to go ahead and do that part, and Luke's going to do a good job, he's been coming down a lot, and we've been kind of working back and forth with him. So I know he's getting ready to get the list in the paper and then also online, so that will be coming, we try to always have that by May first. And so, um, he's going to do a great job, and, and he really is doing a great job, so we really appreciate him. Um, but just super thankful for my people and all the hard work they do, we really do have great people at the county and appreciate them all, so.
Very good.
That's all I have, unless you have questions or.
Thanks Nicole, appreciate it. Okay, commission reports, do you feel like doing some?
Yeah, but I'm going to make it super short.
Okay, I figured that.
I don't feel like talking, um, just a couple of things, the first thing, uh, my dad passed away about three and a half weeks ago-ish. I just want to thank everybody really for the outpouring of support to our family, um, employees at the county were awesome, um, we got flowers and cards and we just really appreciate, really appreciative of, of, uh, everybody's outpouring of support, I was oh, for the month or so prior, you know, leading up to his death, uh, I spent a lot of time with him and my mom and we were, you know, it was, we knew it was coming and I appreciate everybody's understanding, you know, I wasn't as engaged in some things as I normally am, and I really appreciate the consideration and time that I had to be able to spend with my family through that time, so that's my first and foremost. Um, we've been, on the economic development side, uh, we've been really busy, um, had our, uh, our economic development advisory board meeting the other day, went through all of the grants, um, all of the grants and all of the, the programs for that grant money is, is headed. Um, ultimately, the county commission oversees that board, and, uh, Danny Stewart will be, you know, we've made recommendations of that board, so Danny will, he'll be coming to commission in the next few weeks to, to get final approval for those expenditures. Um, I've got, we, we've got UAT conference this week, um, I'm not going to attend that, uh, up north, uh, on Thursday. I'm headed to Mexico with economic development and the governor's office on a, a trade mission. Uh, it's kind of an extended trade mission. Uh, Mayor Green and Danny Stewart. Mayor Green and Danny Stewart and I are, are leaving Thursday morning, flying somewhere south of Mexico City, spending Friday looking at some agriculture operations and will be back in town Saturday at noon. So it's not like we're going to Cancun.
Dang it.
Uh, dang it. But I was invited to do that. They thought that was important, that we have representation from both the county and the city on that effort. Moving forward with the jail, I've spent a lot of time answering questions and spent a lot of time with folks in the fiddler's area. Just making sure that they're properly informed of what's going on. You know, it's too preliminary to really say anything, but Danny's phones been ringing off the hook with inquiries into that area. I know that you guys went and made a visit with the grocery store. I inadvertently had a follow-up visit. My daughter played a softball game the other night down at Water Canyon, and some of the folks that were involved in your meeting had daughters on the softball team. We actually ended up sitting together during the softball team, softball games. Got some things worked out, so. Or at least, you know, I, I think that's a good thing. So we're really, you know, really concerned that we just make sure that the information that we can share legally that we do share and, and keep that process moving forward. I was asked to help out with the Spring Home and Garden Fair from the Home Builders Association. When you get friends that are put in charge of big projects, they tend to suck all the other friends in and over this weekend, we did a, a pancake breakfast and raffle for some folks who are suffering from cancer and went in conjunction with the Spring Home and Garden Fair. It was super successful. We raised a whole bunch of money for those folks, so that was really, I was really proud to be able to take part in that. That was a fun, fun thing, and I will leave it at that.
Hey, I've got a couple of things, not a lot, but last, after last commission meeting, I flew, drove to Salt Lake and flew to Colorado Springs. Went there with the Mayor Green, the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District Board and a few others. We toured a, it was a pipeline project, the SDS Pipeline from Colorado Springs to Pueblo. It's about a sixty-two mile project. It's very similar to the one we're looking at from the West Desert. And Stan Tech, the engineering firm, spent a couple of days with us, training us, answering questions. It was really valuable experience to, to see what they did and some of the hurdles they went through. It was really interesting. One, one, one tour they took us to was they had to run a pipeline under two freeways, a railroad track, and then a bunch of wetlands. There was about two hundred and fifty big cottonwood trees they, they would have had to remove and, and replace. And they were able to basically dig a huge pit, about a fifty feet diameter, foot diameter pit and, and drop a auger down in the ground and, and bore a, a tunnel where they put a, about a ninety-one inch pipe through and then grounded it and it was, and welded it. It was really fascinating. Just seeing all their infrastructure and that was, that was really valuable. These, these trips like this, years ago, we, our board, when I was on the water board, we traveled to Arizona to tour the, the central or the, the Central Arizona Project cap and, and it's just, when you look at these projects with water, they take a long time. You can't just snap your fingers and have something happen. You have to plan way ahead, and that's, that's really the, the, the charge of the Water District, Central Iron County Water Conservancy Conservancy District, and as a commission, we, we have the charge to appoint those board members and we have a really good board. And their, their, their duty is to look fifty years out, make sure we have water for our kids and grandkids, basically. And so these, these, these trips are really really interesting. They open your eyes and, and really give you a feel for, for what you can do. Fairgrounds improvements are coming along. The, the main structure that, where we raised the old and built the new is, it's complete. The actual building is complete. They've still gotta do the six foot apron on the front and there's an eight foot ramp, ADA ramp on the west side. They've got a pour and that, I think they dug the footings last Friday for that. And it'll be nice because that six foot apron on the front will have a four foot retaining wall and they'll actually slope, so it'll be about a three foot drop when they backfill that and slope it down to the edge of the arena, so there'll be a lot of area out there. We'll put some grass and people can bring their lawn chairs and and, 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 and have, and, and, and that way-
Blankets?
Yeah, blankets, whatever, and when they, when it, where it's dropped down like that, the chairs won't impede the view of the first row of the bleachers, so it's gonna be nice. So that's coming along. Carter's, are doing a great job on that. They're also erecting the building over by the I don't know, the display buildings for the fair. They're building that, they're erecting that right now, so that's coming along. Uh, one last thing I have, we traveled to the state Republican Convention this last weekend and I was proud to see our friend Emily Green, who ran for District fourteen for the State School Board. She won that handily with sixty-seven percent of the delegate vote, and so she'll be representing. And I think she represents Iron County, some of, I believe some of San Juan, Juab, Sevier, Grand, and I think Harbin, I think, was it maybe Miller too? I can't remember the part of Miller, but it's a, it's the biggest district in the state and Emily will do, do a, a great job there, so. And that's all I have.
Okay. Like Mike said, we went on a little tour down on the eighth. We went down with the mayor and a bunch of elected officials and, and other people down to Colorado City and they were very gracious to take us around and they showed us a lot of the things that were going on down there. Of course, their B's grocery store is beautiful. We were really interested in looking at that. They said they may be interested in, in, in expanding and coming to other areas, so we were as we all know, our grocery stores are pretty busy, so he also took us and showed us the, the new schools, which a lot of those kids weren't able to go to their school, to school. They didn't play sports. Now they have a football field, basketball courts, baseball diamond and they're, they had their first football game down in Colorado City, which was really a neat thing, and they were so thrilled to be able to do that now. The road crew's working out on the Lund Highway and it's looking so fabulous. They're gonna, uh, the con, the one contractor's gonna do the first mile and a half and we're gonna do, the county's gonna do the other, up to three miles this year, so we're gonna, they're getting that ready and we will chip seal that when we start chip sealing in the next month or so. And then eventually it'll, uh, we'll go clear out to Horse Hollow, and I think that's about six miles. And they're doing a really good job. They're also working on the fairgrounds. We have tore out all the racetrack around there and, and they're smoothing that all out and we're gonna haul gravel in there. We're gonna have a ni- really nice parking area there in the front by three hundred, and that's gonna be really nice because we just were really getting limited on parking, so that's gonna help us a lot. We're putting out bids on the sidewalk and curb and gutter. We're hoping we'll be able to do that this year. If, if it's not too much. We're going to get more pedestals put in for electricity there at the fairgrounds and anyway, we're moving forward on the fairgrounds. We're excited to, to get a lot of those things and get it fixed up for, for the fair this year. I went to a celebration with AmeriCorp Seniors Companions Program and Foster Grandparents. They've been serving the five county area for twenty-five years and they truly are superheroes, those volunteers that go in and help the kids read and they go in and help seniors with lighthouse keeping to help them different things and, and that was really fun to get in on that. Joni Lyman is the one that was over that and, and she did a great job. We had a meeting on the eighteenth up at the Five Mile. Richard, Maria, Bryce, Bruce, just kind of reassessing what we're gonna do on that. I called the Paul Briggs the other day for us to be able to get gravel from just across the street, and it's that beautiful red gravel and we're able to get that to put on the roads going in the Five Mile. We're, we're gonna regravel some of those roads in there. There's a lot of work to be done and we are moving forward on it, but it, it's almost looking like we may not be able to get it open. We thought maybe toward the end of the year we would be able to get it open, but we're kind of now shooting probably. We've got a lot to do probably next year. So that'll be, that'll be good, but, but, you know, I appreciate Bryce Williams has worked on that a lot and, and then our road crew's gonna go in there and help them grade some stuff and, and get that gravel hauled in there. I went to, on the twentieth, I went to the Zion Steering Committee meeting, it, up in Zion, and we was able to tour that. I hadn't been up there for a long, long time. There's so many visitors. I think they said last year, five million visitors came into there. They have a bus running every four minutes. Wow, I, I, I thought that was crazy, but they're, they're just, they're gonna do a lot of, they're gonna put a couple of roundabouts in there and they're going to do some more construction in there. They're gonna rebuild one of the, the campgrounds. They're, they're moving toward getting electric buses and and also maybe even hydrogen. And then they talked quite a bit about, on the other side of the park, how they're gonna start developing that also. And this committee is with business owners, elected officials, and of course, the agencies involved and just trying to come up with solutions for all these millions of people coming and having, you know, the accommodations and to be able to do that, not, and not just in Zion, in, in other areas in the state too, so. So it, I think it was a very productive meeting, but I think that was all I had, and if you guys didn't have anything else?
Can I add one more thing really quick? Saturday night, we had a really tragic plane crash here in Iron County. Up, up Cedar Canyon off SR fourteen. I just wanna, the, the Iron County Sheriff's Office, specifically Deputy Turk, Detective Bird, and Sergeant Houchen, I, there, there, it, it was a huge group effort. Those three from the sheriff's office specifically had some really unpleasant tasks and handled those like champs and very professional. There was assistance from the Cedar City Police Department. Detective Matt Topham assisted. Officer Heather Danes was a really big help. David Bullock from Southern Utah University Police Department was, was a really big help. And then there were a ton of search and rescue folks that I just, I can't name them all, but they were just instrumental in turning that into as, I mean, a well-run operation that was just tragic all the way around. I really think those guys deserve some, some atta boys for a really unpleasant and tragic task. They, they were just rock stars. So, just wanted to throw that out.
Oh, thank you.
So Mike, I read that article and it, it was like Highway fourteen, like six miles. Was it between the fourteen and Bryanhead up in there?
Oh, it was right behind Milt's.
Yeah, in, by the old rodeo arena, they said.
Just past the, you would go past the rodeo arena and, I mean, just.
I read something that said Bryanhead and I thought that was odd.
It was right off, it was the south side of fourteen.
Was it down in the bottom then or was it up on that hilltop?
Ish. It was kind of the base of the hill. You could get within about fifty yards of it on that little, on the trail that goes up from the old rodeo grounds to there, and then it was only about fifty yards up the side.
Trying to go up the canyon or flying up the canyon?
They were trying to fly up the canyon and, and couldn't gain altitude and attempted to turn around and come back down the canyon and just lost altitude.
Oh, wow.
And dropped, but.
Well, our hearts go out to those families of the loss.
Nick Holt from the airport as well. He's the airport manager for Cedar Airport. He was extremely helpful. He's the liaison between us and the airport and the NTSB. NTSB investigators were here yesterday. I mean, it was a, it was a huge group effort. And it was just a bad deal, so.
Well, we, we appreciate them so much. You know, our people always step up. They're just fabulous. They always step up and they always do such a great job. And we appreciate them. We, I just wanna-
Yeah, a lot of the things they get pulled into are unpleasant tasks.
Yes, yes. When you have those tragedies, you're just glad you have those people to take care of them.
Those search and rescue folks are all volunteer. I, I don't know how many were there, honestly. I bet there was, I, I bet they had at least twenty people, twenty personnel there, side by sides, four wheelers, ropes, team. They, they were, they were there and, and very organized very quickly and did, and they were awesome. So it was, it was really appreciated.
That's great. Okay, well, we'll take a ten minute break and come back at ten o'clock and go on with our next meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
We're not up yet.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You are now.
Okay, welcome everyone to the ten o'clock meeting, uh, Monday twenty-fifth, um, of April twenty twenty-two. And we're gonna go out of order on our agenda and we're gonna go to skip to eleven. So Shane Manuelli can get back to court. So we'll go ahead with, with his.
Thank you for taking me out of order. I appreciate it. So this is each year, um, for the IDC funding. It's our grant request. So this is the initial request where we, um, make a request for the funding, the renewed funding that we already have and any potential additional funding. That goes back to the IDC, um, they vote on whether they have the funds and then it comes back to us to approve or deny, um, at the commission level if we want to utilize that funding. And so the request is the same for managing public defender this year, the legal assistant, which has been very helpful. Um, and then a potential additional request for a social worker if we can utilize that and an additional attorney. Again, we don't have to, to take that funding, but we at least wanna make that request and if they have it, then we can make the decision if we want to fill those positions or not. Um, and so I've submitted just with your, uh, material for this morning, the, the grant application cover sheet. It's nice. They've simplified this, um, as previous commissioners, chairs know, they used to have a sign like twenty pages. And now they've got it down to just the one cover sheet.
Oh, nice.
So if the commission approves that, I have that cover sheet with me or if you have one, um, to sign.
And on your way out, be sure, uh, my office gets a copy of that.
I will do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. Can we get a motion on that or discussion?
I'll, I'll move to approve the grant renewal request presented by Shane Manuelli.
Second.
I moved in second and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
I'll bring this up for.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All righty, well, we'll move back to number one. And a public hearing discussion and approval of a proposed zone change from residential one acre R one to light industrial L I. Location located west of thirty nine hundred west and north of SR fifty six Cedar City, Utah approximately seventy five point twenty acres. We'll have Reed come up and.
Which file am I looking for Reed?
There you go, good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Appreciate the indulgence to get this going, it's easier to show on slides the properties and what's going on. This is of course a zone change as you indicated on the agenda. For the seventy five point two acres that's outlined here in the yellow. This went before the planning commission and had a good discussion, the planning commission vote was to recommend approval five to two. We had some good discussion and we brought, there was a number of neighbors there and. Mr. Staley who is here representing the application here had also in in prior to the planning commission hearing had done a public meeting where he had taken out an invitation to all the properties in the area and had an open house at his facility to explain what it was that he was doing. There were a few of the people who were there at the planning commission meeting who weren't able to go to the hearing or hadn't received notice and were also were able to discuss with Mr. Staley some of the their concerns after the meeting and I think that they had some good discussions. One, we did have one, I will make mention of one letter that we got after the planning commission meeting from the planning commission meeting notice that we can enter into record because we weren't able to do that for the planning commission meeting. But this property is currently located right between the Monavista and the Buena Vista subdivisions.
Is it working?
I can't get either the keyboard, the mouse or the.
Is the clicker turned on? The keyboard and mouse won't work.
Won't work on yours because this won't work because this goes to yours.
Yeah, but it's on, it's through mine, so you should be able to at least click, is the.
It's not, it's on. There we go.
There it went.
Yeah.
Okay, property is located just right off of Highway fifty six between the Monavista and Buena Vista subdivisions. And you can see that the property is seventy seventy seven acres, whoops, and there's a little show up on here, but you can see up in this corner, there is just a little bit more of the property that we're not rezoning at this time, that's going to stay. It has some corrals and stuff on and and would stay agriculture and their intention is to split that off in the future, so we're not proposing to rezone that. The rezone, currently the property is zoned residential one, R one, and that's what the property is on both sides of it. Actually, on the on the Monavista side, it's R one, on the Buena Vista side, it's R one half. And so this property is zoned R one, their interest is to rezone it to light industrial. The property, you can see the zoning around the property here in the county. This is an island of of Cedar City all around it, so we looked at the zoning map for Cedar City as well. You can see here that the north, the north side of the property is zoned what they call the annex transition. And that's kind of a holding zone for whatever the property owner wants to come in, so we don't really know what that's going to be in the future. As we look at the the future land use plan for the city, this is their new one based off of their just recently adopted. This property just to the on the north side is zoned for a single family residential, low density. On the south, you can see that the property has some central commercial and general commercial on the south side as well as rural rural estate. And their zoning, if it were to annex would be their general plan would call for it to be single family residential or rural rural estate zoning. This is what the property looks like, this is looking at at from the southeast corner looking northwest. Most of you are familiar with the property, this is the north west east corner of the property looking southeast. And this is from the east side of the property or west side of the property looking east. This is essentially what the property want, the property owners are proposing as a light industrial development, this is a possible layout. As you're aware, as we rezone property, it could accommodate any of the uses that are allowed in that zone, we don't do it for a project specific. And that's one of the challenges in rezoning property is that we we it doesn't come with a a contract to say this is exactly what you're gonna do with the property, it allows for the uses that are allowed in that zone. And so I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration, even though the property owner is buying it for a very specific purpose and has stated what those purposes are. And the the little green lines in between are their interest in retaining agricultural green areas in those, the white areas would be buildings. This is some of the things that they're looking at developing there, there, the property is large enough to accommodate beyond their own interests, their own businesses, but the interests in accommodating some of these other things relate to their business. And they're aware of other businesses in the area that are providing services for them like the powder coating and the plastic roto molding and and fabrication, some of the things that they're contracting with other businesses to provide for their business are struggling and and having a place that accommodates their needs and so they need to grow. So they're pretty pretty comfortable that they can over time fill this area up. I think it was a ten year plan that they were looking at to try to fill that up with those types of businesses. They would be large buildings with space in between. Some of the concerns that we've had from neighbors were related to traffic in the area. And the the fact that you've got a rail spur possibility coming off of there, which could be accommodated in this zone that they had expressed concern with. The interest in the property, of course, is that they retain some agriculture in the north west corner of the property where it's just as hay farm continues here. They would like to just develop the east side and be able to have, because of the nature of their business, they would like to be able to continue to have hay fields there to do demonstrations and to show how their equipment works and and that's kind of what they would do with the green spaces in between the buildings. As well as create a place that could accommodate some of the runoff that would be able to be absorbed into those properties as well. So this is essentially a summary, runs between four hundred and eight hundred north on thirty nine hundred west. The surrounding property, we talked about the zoning there and services, as you're aware, as we look at zone changes, zone changes are legislative decisions. And the planning commission made a recommendation on that. Legislative decision means that the criteria for which you can rezone property is based off of whether you believe in the interest of the community that there's a greater good that could occur there than what detriments there could be, or if you believe that it could be detrimental, that it could be offset by other mitigation. So you're trying to do what they call a reasonably debatable standard, which means that you simply try to promote the general welfare from what you believe would be of the best interest in the area. There's no criteria in which you have to meet, we have the considerations, the evaluation considerations that we look at. And that's to see, you know, can it be an area that could provide this zoning? Does it have the infrastructure, is there water and sewer and transportation corridors and things that you need in a light industrial zone to be able to accommodate that? And is light industrial appropriate in the area? We have the difference, as you're reminded in other rezonings, that the the difference between light industrial and industrial zoning is that light industrial, all of the activities that occur need to occur within a building. Whereas in an industrial zone, which we have out in Iron Springs and other areas, that that those activities occur outside. In a light industrial, the light industrial zoning is examples of what we have in Iron County is just right there at the Y. Those areas where the Trust Company and the Speed Link and some of those light industrial uses right there are light industrial in our in the in the unincorporated area. And that's essentially what the is in the city there too with those facilities right at the Y. That's all light industrial property and we have residential around that and we haven't found that that to be detrimental in terms of the impacts for residential where most of those activities, all of the the painting, the grinding, the any of the manufacturing activities need to occur in the building, all compressors, all of those activities. And that's essentially what they're doing currently at their current location off of industrial or off of yeah, Industrial Road and Airport Road. Is that those activities would be very similar and the the businesses that they're trying to attract to complement their business are also occurring in in buildings and in with residential and around them, so. The planning commission, as a majority of the planning commission didn't feel like that it would be detrimental to those areas and and I think that the Staley's have been successful in addressing a lot of those concerns for the neighbors. I know that some of the people that were at the planning commission meeting expressed some concern and by the end of the meeting, they say, oh, maybe this wouldn't be as, you know, as bad as having a bunch of homes in there. And so they, I think, accommodated well a lot of the interests and the questions that came out of that, so. That's an introduction to the project, I think we can go to public hearing and then Mr. Staley wants to add to that and do any further explanation, then he could do that.
Do that, okay. The chair declares the public hearing open and if anybody would like to speak on this zone change, they're welcome to come up. Please state your name first.
My name is Logan Sisam, last name spelled S I S A M. I'm a transplant to Cedar City area, to to Iron County. Came here for blue skies, more space and closer community and that's what I'm finding. I live in Buena Vista and when I first heard about this possibility of that business going in that beautiful alfalfa field, I was reactionary. I was initially thinking, oh, no, 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 that this this may get in the way of that more space, closer community. And I stand up here not as being requested by Dave Staley to to come and speak, but as as an individual that initially spoke against and in frustration of the the proposed idea. And the more educated I got, Commissioner Wood, you were even in the meeting there. The the great thing is that the Staley's are an amazing business, they're amazing family and they've done well for this community and statewide. I've had twenty years working with private sector and in all my time in working with businesses, I have never met a man or a business that is more concerned and more a part of the community than I have with Dave Staley. I can't say that there still isn't concern, but I would say that there's more concern about leaving it open to the purchase of high density housing than there is working with the person that is from here, loves this area and wants his business to be a part of Monty Vista and Buena Vista communities. I believe it would bring our communities together, I speak for myself, not the communities as a whole. I I know that I have seen him work, especially since the planning meeting, worked very hard to to talk with each and every one of those homes that that border the property and every single one of the homeowners. There's been even extensions and invites into the community to, hey, let's have a barbecue or something, what works for you? We'll bring, we'll bring Dave Staley out to talk about any questions, comments or concerns. One, the planning meeting got over a few weeks back. I was one of those people talking with him, one of those homeowners in the area that that had concerns. And every time someone had expressed a concern, Dave would say, let's see how we can make that work. Oftentimes in business, when you hear that, it's fluff. With Dave and with the feeling that I get from from what I know of his company and what I know of his family and now what I'm learning about him is a man that will keep his word to to do what he can to minimize impact to the communities. A community that I live in now and a community that I that I plan to live in for many years to come, hopefully, until I retire and 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 continue to enjoy the benefits of Southern Utah. And if there's any additional questions that you may have for me, please let me know and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others like to? Seeing then, we will close.
Oh.
Oh, one more, okay.
This will be a very brief statement, I'm Rod Decker. I've lived in Buena Vista for twenty seven years and have enjoyed the time there very, very much. And we are pleased, my wife Leah and I are pleased to support the position of Mr. Staley. We feel that Staley West has made tremendous contributions to this area and not only in the business area, but also to maintain the agricultural heritage that is so important over a hundred and fifty years as far as this area is concerned. He is a good community member who is public spirited, does not want to destroy environment or anything such as that. And I think that the advantages that he has presented far outweigh some of the concerns which he has mentioned also, which have been addressed at appropriate times in the past. So we are pleased as residents of Buena Vista, my wife and I, to support the position of Mr. Staley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Nope, okay, I will close the, the chair will close the public hearing and turn it back over to Reed.
Thank you. These are the considerations that we look at when we consider zoning and rezoning property. Whether the the services can be available to provide there, I kind of skipped over some of that discussion, I just wanted to to reiterate the the public service availability, this is, there is central sewer that runs in thirty nine hundred west. And I think that that's a good thing to be able to tie these on, these businesses. And they have a well for their water, there's not any water available in central Iron County Water Conservancy District in that area and they would have to annex in order to be able to provide water through the city. And so they do have a good well there that's been irrigating that property for a number of years and is sufficient to provide water for those businesses. They they, we would look at fire flow at time of either further subdivision or building permit to determine by the building department and by building code and the fire department, how fire flow or fire suppression could be handled. But certainly with that well and with the other types of fire suppression and building material types, that can be addressed. That has really good transportation corridors and one of the of the things mentioned in the in both the the meeting that Mr. Staley held for the neighbors and the plant planning commission meeting is that their interest would be to try to pull as much of that traffic off of thirty nine hundred west and try to keep it interior to their property so that the prob, the the traffic moving between the buildings would be on the property rather than on thirty nine hundred to alleviate some of that traffic. And that they would try to accommodate scheduling of their their shifts so that it didn't put the load up those critical intersections at thirty nine hundred west and and Highway fifty six as well as up on that other end, just keeping any of that traffic off of thirty nine hundred. At busy times when people are going to work and to school, they'll start a shift earlier than that and then run it a little different time, so I think that that would be good. We know that thirty nine hundred west at some point is gonna have to have some kind of traffic control on that as more and more development comes. Just a little bit to show of the area, I'm I'm familiar with, this darn pointer doesn't work on the screen, but the property is just to the north on the east side of. on the screen, but the property is just to the north on the east side of 3900. There's three properties right there that are already in process of subdivision right now. And the one immediately north of Buena Vista is going to be twin homes. There'll be more density there, a lot more density going further north. And those properties are already in process through the city because those are in the city currently.
Reed, I have a question. Does any part of this put any kind of pressure to eliminate the island situation? Or is?
That was a consideration discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. And in fact, I think it was raised by you about the possibility of whether this would create more likelihood that it could annex or reduce the likelihood of annexation. And it's a difficult question. I don't think that, there are so many other factors that play into Buena Vista and Buena Vista ever being able to annex, that the option and the property offer prior to Mr. Staley's offer that expired was to annex and develop a higher density development in the city. They felt that that was the only way that they could make that pay was to develop and get water because the only way they can develop that is to have water and the only way they can get water is to annex in terms of the kind of fire suppression that a subdivision would need and to be able to have a culinary public water system that would be required on that. And so, as they looked at that, they felt like that that was the only option, that they had to develop that property and would be to annex that. Part of the concern would be then splitting Buena Vista Island that is all an island now into two different islands with city in the middle and whether that would enhance or encourage the prospect of either of those other subdivisions annexing. And, you know, I don't have a crystal ball enough to determine whether that's really viable or not. Most likely not, especially for Buena Vista because they just spent a lot of money developing their water system and revamping their water system. And they're currently in the process of creating a, through the US RDA to do a sewer, sewer-ing their subdivision. Buena Vista has a little more difficulty with their water system and they had actually talked with the city a couple of different times about the possibility of annexing and trying to upgrade their system to tie on because their water system has a few more problems. So, the better prospect would be for that side, but they have little smaller lots and the standard for that to come into the city is curb gutter and sidewalk and they're opposed to that and their streets are chip sealed and there would have to be asphalt pavement and curb gutter. The likelihood of that is probably not in our lifetime, but, you know, I can't predict the future. But we didn't feel like this project or rezoning this would push it one way or the other, that would make it so that it could annex or that would make it more likely to annex. We couldn't tell that it would have any bearing on that decision. So, other services there, I think that drainage is an important one. That's a large property with a lot of impervial service. If we, all the size of those buildings and all of the asphalt, drainage is going to be an important consideration. One of the things that came up, and in fact, Dave, since we even visited, there's a main drainage ditch that runs, just going to walk over here, right through here. And as we were looking at developing as a former possibility for the jail site, Smeed and all those areas of this property developed, this is going to have to be maintained as a main drainage corridor. So, we'd want to accommodate that in your layout and make plans for that.
That'd be open ditch or what?
Currently, it's open, but it would probably be covered, yeah. At the point that it would be developed and as they developed, they could pipe that section that goes through their property if it didn't fall in a place that would be conducive to their development.
They offset that where it goes on the edge of their green space?
Yeah.
Those could be adjusted to exactly where.
This is a concept, yeah, and they could be moved. So, that's really the infrastructure question. I think that all of the other infrastructure, power, gas, communications are all right there in the area. And so, from a standpoint of light industrial, not this project specific, but light industrial, I think would not be, from staff standpoint and the discussion at the Planning Commission, the two people who opposed that at the Planning Commission were just concerned about putting light industrial and residential, on how to keep that continuity and not from the prospect of this project, but from the standpoint of light industrial being in the middle of residential. And so, I did want to make mention of the one letter and I'll give a copy to the clerk here. Ms. Luanne Judd had just proposed a concern. I had a chance to visit with her, but that letter came just right after the Planning Commission meeting and it expressed the same concern that I think most of the people out there had in the beginning was, I don't want, you know, this, I think she mentioned concerns about the possibility of railroad tracks so close to her house. She's right on the east, the west side of this property. Her eastern back fence would be adjacent to this and she had just expressed that concern. But I think that it speaks well of Dave, you know, Dave probably ought to run for office or something because he was so politically successful.
Since he already is.
His first open house and how many people there were there. Dave, do you know how many? There was probably 60, 80 people, something like that, who came to that. And then, based on the Planning Commission, you know, we probably had 20 or so people there in concern of that. And then here we are at this meeting and there's no one here concerned. So, he's done a good job in explaining the project and explaining the possible impacts and how he plans to address those. But again, you know, this is always a question that we have with zoning and it's something that I think the Planning Commission needs, or the County Commission and the Planning Commission needs to be aware of. As we rezone properties and it seems like we're doing it specific to this project, specific for Mr. Staley, in the event that, you know, something happened and they didn't go forward with this project, it's still zoned light industrial.
Still has to be within the building.
It still has to, any activity there still has to occur there or still has to fall within those same guidelines. The thing that the County may consider is, you know, in the event that they become aware that that may not go forward, they'll reconsider rezoning the property. Because a lot of, even though, I'm not saying it's wrong, the fact that the least amount of opposition there is at this point is a result of Mr. Staley, not the fact that it's going to light industrial and the fact that he has represented his interests really well. In the event that that project didn't occur, it might be appropriate to look at rezoning that, you know, back to more residential like the neighborhood because a different proposal may have a whole different light on that. And so, those are things I think we ought to keep in mind as we go forward. We're not contract zoning, we're not doing this specific to a project. And for the record, it is any activity that could occur in light industrial, but it's also not permanent. It doesn't have to be that way forever and ever. We need to be aware of that and think about that as projects go forward. So, I think that that covers most of the considerations.
So, I actually have a question on that, Reed. If that scenario were to play out, would it be, would it be in the county's interest to kind of initiate a zone change back or does that really kind of fall to the owners?
No, no. The county, that's my point exactly, is that the county should take initiative. The county should look at situations like that. We've looked at that at the Planning Commission for several years now and said, we really need to kind of revamp our zoning scheme because we have a lot of properties that were zoned something for a project. And then, 2005 and 2008 hit and different times and things changed. And we have a bunch of residential properties that are out in agricultural areas, but they were rezoned so they could be developed and then they never got developed and we really ought to be rezoning those back to 820. The county should take initiative based on current activities in the area and what those things are not, what that property owner may think they may want to do sometime in the future. They could come in and rezone at that time, but I think that the county should initiate zone changes when they see that things are such that it would be more commensurate with the activities in the area. And as different land uses change as neighbors, then, you know, some of those things need to be reevaluated and I think it's time to do that.
What kind of fencing would be required on this project?
We do not have a fencing requirement in the county in terms of like what the city does. If it got commercial against residential or something like that, we don't have a requirement.
What do you propose, Dave, in the future with fencing?
What we talked about at the meeting was possibly doing like a hedge that would be sort of a natural barrier and be sound, sort of sound effective.
I see.
Even though there won't be much sound, but some of them felt kind of good about that, the ones that were the close neighbors, as long as it was kept.
Good shape, yeah.
We're probably open to those kind of things. Anything we want to do to make sure we are a good neighbor that they have out there, honestly, I just don't want to drill. This area really right here is probably where we've had 98% of the concern, you know, and that's of course because of the rail and just their homes and backyards are.
How many homes is or along there?
Probably five or six.
Five, it's like.
Yeah. Unless there are questions specific to any of these considerations, the deal with, of course, just generally like number nine, that changing the zone would not be adversely, you know, adverse to the area and would affect positively the general health, safety and welfare of the area.
So, the property to the north is city, Cedar City?
That's correct.
That's all Cedar City, yeah.
North and south highway and then on the other side of the highway is city.
City, okay. Very good. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, you know, early in the process, I live in the area and use 3900 West a lot. And coming off the process of considering the jail property there and knowing what the concerns of the neighborhood were, you know, when I met with Mr. Staley, that was, I mean, the only, not even to say it was a huge concern of mine because I was, I thought that the jail would be fine there as well. You know, the only concern was that breaking up the residential. But just knowing Staley West's track record and working with Dave on projects of the past, I have complete confidence that it will be in addition to the neighborhood and there's, I mean, I think they've proven that and they're always great to work with. I think that this is better, well, I think this is better for the neighborhood than any high-density housing or anything else that might attract that area. I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, when I was at the zoning meeting on this, the ones that supported it, no Dave, no, you know, the way that he runs business and that, the couple that didn't vote for it, I don't think knew, knows, know Dave and his integrity and all of the rest that, and didn't quite understand it. They were both new people on the board too. So, you know, and maybe, and maybe they still feel that way and that's fine, you know, because that's good to have that kind of debate. We had, there was a very good discussion, I felt like, that night and I thought it was really good.
I'd just echo those two comments. I mean, I've known the Staley's for many years and they're straight shooters, they honor their word. If you go into their operation, you can eat off the floor. I mean, it's just clean and organized and I can imagine a forklift running around a little bit, but wouldn't make any more noise than a swather cutting hay.
Exactly.
But still be a swather.
Yes, yes.
I actually had one question. I think if I were on the east side of Buena Vista, I might be a little concerned about the rail. In your public meetings or your open houses, did you happen to talk about maybe not running that at 3:00 AM? I mean, I know that a spur isn't going to, yeah, would you come up and maybe speak to that? A spur isn't going to be as busy as the main line.
Sorry, I'm sold.
That's fine.
Sprinklers this morning, over there, actually. Last week, it's always fun, the first. I'm Dave Staley, by the way. The first couple of weeks of starting up old dead wheel lines is always fun. So, I usually take a daily shower, which, you know, normally it's just once a month whether I need it or not, so. But I walked into my office earlier this, after I got done and I was all wet and they said, is that sweat? And I said, yeah, I'd like to think so, but I'd like you to think so. That's just water. Anyway, so answering the rail question, the way that we, we probably will not use the rail much, except we do get some shipping containers in, probably about twice a month, we'll get a shipping container in that comes off the rail in Salt Lake and then just gets trucked down to us. And one of the other suppliers, which would be the plastic rotor molding, is really interested in the rail to bring in bulk resin for some of the other people that they do business for. They won't bring ours in because we don't use that high of an amount. And so, they're really interested in having a rail spur and also the steel processing and not the fabrication, but the steel processing would possibly have an interesting, interest in it would be way up on the north end, just to bring in flat steel that they would then cut.
Have you talked to Union Pacific?
I have talked to them about the possibility of a spur and they've indicated that it is definitely a possibility that it could come off from there.
They're a little hard to work with.
Yeah, I'm understanding that too. The thing that I think will be our biggest barrier to the rail coming off will just be the expense versus the benefit that we would get from it. And it may not pencil out because it'll probably cost a million dollars to put it in, I'd imagine, I don't know. And whether we get, because we would be looking at cost savings if we were to bring it in to have cheaper transportation over many, many years. But we would not see cars going in and out of there every day for sure. I mean, it might be a weekly thing that we'd get a car in or two, you know, that would go into the plastics. And we could, we could see ourselves possibly shipping our overseas small machines on, in containers because we've designed them to fit in containers. But all of our large machines, which is half of what we build, we can't fit in containers. So, we could see possibly setting up a little craning system right there by our front building that could crane containers onto the flat cars there possibly. And again, that's whether it makes economic sense to do it or not. And that's a big question mark because we'd have to see what the costs are versus the benefits. So, I would say right now, there's probably a 50/50 chance or maybe a 40/60 or maybe a 30/70 that we would ever even put it in. But I don't want to say we won't ever put it in. Because it could be beneficial for us if, as things grow, you know. But it's not going to be lots of traffic in there at all, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, does that answer that question?
Yeah, any other thing you'd like to speak?
No, only thing I'll say is I've been having so much fun over there the last month, kind of anticipating being the owner of the place, that I might not ever want to build anything over there because I think I'm healthier than I've been for years, walking about five miles a day at a good brisk walk, chasing sprinklers and stuff. So, I might just tell the boys, sorry. But, no, we really look forward to it. And I do anticipate the long-term vision, actually making a really nice, clean campus over there. I think it will. One of the things that we need for our business, and this again isn't, you're not judging this on a project-specific basis, but one of the things we need desperately is a large event area in our, in our front building to house our training events and other things. And if anybody knows a little bit about us, we already allow use of our warehouse quite a bit for all kinds of things, from junior proms to spring, you know, dances and political meetings and other, the sheriff's event and other things. And so, we get more requests than we can fill for that. We would anticipate that this would have a much larger area for those kind of things and we would love to have the communities on both sides of us use that, in fact, all around us. It would be probably at least 100 by 120 feet, which is a nice, large area, which could be used for lots of other things besides what we need it for when we need it. But those kind of things, we like to, we like to hope we can afford to do all that and make it really kind of a central gathering area for things there too, for the communities around us. We talked about possibly putting a little park down in that west corner there, right next to where it says continuous, but we actually got a little kickback from the neighbors across the street and they said, no, please, because then there's going to be more traffic. And so, we said, you know what, we don't have to do that, it was going to cost us money anyway. At some point, we just thought it might be a nice community addition, but, so we probably won't do that, probably just leave it open and then maybe have the other areas up in our building that could be used for community events and things like that too, so. But we're super excited, it's a beautiful little place. We feel like it was one of those gifts from above a little bit that fell into our hands at the right time and the right price and when we were in a position to be able to do it. So, we're very much looking forward to doing it. So if you don't have any other questions for me, or if you do, I'll answer.
No, thank you.
Very good, thanks.
I'd move for approval of a proposed, I'd move for approval of a zone change from residential one acre, R-one, to light industrial, L.I., located west of thirty-nine hundred west and north of fifty, of SR fifty-six, Cedar City, Utah. Approximately seventy-five point two zero acres, uh, with the legal description mentioned in the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All right, we'll move to the number two, another zone change.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a zone change as well. Proposed zone change from agricultural twenty to R-one. This is located just a little bit, uh, further west and north of the prior rezone. This is a sixty-acre par, two, two thirty-acre parcels, uh, for a total of sixty acres. If you're familiar with the area, this is located just north on, uh, forty-five hundred west from Park West subdivision, uh, just a little bit past where the Water Conservancy District well is, if you're familiar with that, out on forty-five hundred west. It's out past the end of the current pavement on the west side of forty-five hundred west. So a zone change does not require the improvements, but their intention is to subdivide to one-acre lots and that would necessitate the con, extension of pavement on out to and in front of them through the property. They're aware of that, their interest is to rezone. We do have the availability, here's just a, this, this really goes light, doesn't it? You can't hardly distinguish the colors there. This is the city zoning map to show, because it is in the annexation expansion area of the city and so I want to just provide those kinds of, uh, opportunities. And this is in low-density residential, so it conforms with the city's general plan if that were ever to annex. I think that's important, only because we want to look at, just like on the prior property, the likelihood of it being able to annex in the future. And we want to be commensurate with those zoning concepts, so that it would be eligible to annex in the future. Because now, as we develop and we're tying onto the sewer and the water systems are put in, that they could meet the city's standards, so that at the time that the city grows, they could annex, because they're already at the standard. So that's one of the things we are trying to do. Just an aerial of the property showing that everything on the east side of forty-five hundred west is in agricultural production right now, but nothing on the west side is. And you can see, uh, that most of that is, this, this falls in between forty-five hundred west and the Three Peaks Solar, uh, Utility Scale Solar Plant. They run right up against that east side of the property, of the solar project. Just another view of that. There's three tw, uh, six thirties there and the bottom one is the same family, but the two, the two brothers that own the two thirty-acre pieces are ready to move forward and then this other one isn't quite ready yet. So that's why it's just taking in this sixty acres. This is a look at the count, the, the, uh, s, uh, recent transportation corridor and we, transportation is an important consideration when we look at the area and determine whether or not it has the possibility. Again, we're looking at feasibility at zoning. We're looking at what, can it be served with the current infrastructure? And what other infrastructure may be required in order to make this a viable area, so that we don't overburden our systems. And so, infrastructure-wise, the, this, that, with the star, you can kind of see as we zoom in, the green is a master-planned seventy-five-foot road. We have master-planned that up through those areas to get the seventy-five feet. And so that's what would be required as it's extended. And it ties in, you can see with what would be called thirty-two hundred north, um, on the north end, that would tie over to the Belt Route and back to Lund Highway. So there's a good transportation, future corridors there that can be built and accommodate some residential out in that area. This is an area, I just wanted to point out on the zoning map pretty quick, that you can see, uh, is all agricultural twenty, but moving from the south, we did a recent rezone on this property right here to be residential one acre. They want to do this phase next and we're going to see, uh, the development of, of housing, a lot of opportunity for residential development going that direction because of the availability of services. And that's why I wanted to just talk about.
That's the Jensen property, right?
Yes, uh-huh. So as we look at services and what's available, in forty-five hundred west, currently the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District has a main water line. The sewer line, forty-five hundred west extension out to the furthest, most west sewer, uh, in the valley right now is at forty-five hundred west and runs right through there. So that takes care of the fire flow, because it's on the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District system. We have good transportation corridors there with the extension of forty-five hundred west. The main access out there right now is, uh, sixteen hundred north to forty-five hundred west. But you can also come into it further north from twenty-eight hundred north and forty-one hundred west. Those will all connect. There'll be a good grid out in that area, be able to provide transportation. Drainage, uh, of course, has to be addressed and thirty-two hundred west, which runs along the north side of this property, will be a major drainage corridor in the area. And so I think thirty-two hundred west is probably, as I go back to the transportation plan right here, the main green line that goes across, uh, we have twenty-four hundred, uh, just south of it, right here. This is, this is twenty-four hundred north and that will be a major, that's a hundred-foot corridor. And we already have a, a reserved, uh, in fact, let me go back to the, um, zoning. The, right along, this, this will be twenty-four hundreds, uh, north, right here. Twenty-four hundred north goes, there's a hundred-foot corridor already preserved through the solar farm. When that was built, we preserved that hundred-foot corridor, so that that could be a master-planned road. This will be seventy-five foot and that'll be seventy-five foot across the top of thirty-two hundred. So there's a good transportation corridor there and the availability of the services.
And that'll go into Iron Springs, right?
It will tie in, um, to Iron Springs Road. Where, we actually have, uh, Rich's here to, we, he could talk briefly, would have recently put out an RFP to do a design possibility or a, a corridor, uh, to go from the corner of thirty-two hundred north here over to the Iron Springs Road, to show how that could best be accomplished. That's our only other railroad crossing out in that area currently. And so that's where we would want to tie the Belt Route, fifty-seven hundred west, right in at, uh, through Iron Springs going that way. So he has hired an engineer and they've made, I don't know if they've made proposals yet, but they're, they should be finishing the, that evaluation and showing where the preferred corridor would be for there.
Doesn't twenty-four hundred go, he's going east, end up there by Mel Clark's and, and Bulldog, right?
It goes all the way across the valley and comes clear to I-15.
Twenty-four hundred, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it drops south of, uh, Gemini.
What, what road is it the, the mayor Green has talked about trying to punch through? Yeah, it's twenty-four, yeah, okay.
So twenty-four hundred actually starts right here by the bus garage.
That's right, that's right, yeah, it goes across and through.
Across now.
But there's a, it's, it doesn't go across the Stevensville ditch yet, it doesn't.
Right, needs a bridge, go across the Stevensville, but it'll go all the way across the valley. That's our only, and our best east-west corridor across the valley, north of highway fifty-six. So it's a. And it, and we preserved, uh, when Flying L was platted, there's a hundred-foot corridor preserved there. The neighbors aren't going to like it when it finally gets to be built, but, but there is a preserved corridor.
It's always been there though for all that time.
It's always been preserved as part of the plat, but they'll, I'm sure, have some concerns about that. But anyway, this area, I think, is set up to be served well and I think that we're going to be seeing a lot more development out in that area and that part of the beach, because of the availability of water and sewer and good transportation corridors that can be built with development. The water and sewer is already there, but transportation will come.
Weren't they thinking of doing the interchange there at one time on twenty-four hundred, off I-15? Oh, sorry. Weren't they thinking about doing that, uh, off the, um, off the interchange, off that way at one time, or is that?
No.
Wasn't it twenty-four hundred?
The interstate?
Yes.
No, that, that, it ties in up three thousand right now.
Right.
It swings up and comes to three thousand.
But, but at one time, they were considering it.
Yeah, that's where the old interchange used to be before they moved it north.
Right, correct, that's what I thought.
Yep. So there's good connections there. The, the other services are available in the area. There is not, uh, gas out that far right now, but I think this kind of development will help bring it out there. So, uh, you know, power and other things are all, all there, so.
Reed, I have a question. Um, we talked to, Ray talked about, uh, widening that road and putting it up to this property. Did, has he said, I mean, he was going to do that, because the county wasn't ready to do that.
It is a requirement of development. He will have to extend that road as part of the subdivision. That's why I say at subdivision time, not zoning.
He was just going to do, have his own property begin with.
He was going to just do a house.
But now, now he's doing a subdivision, he'll need to do that.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. All right, thank you. Um, can we get a motion on that? Or discussion, oh, we gotta hit, public hearing, oh, yeah. Okay, chair opens a public hearing on agenda number two. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and then go on.
We did not have any public comment at the planning commission either. There was no concern, no one came. Notifications were sent out and all property owners were notified. But, uh, there were no, no, uh, concerns raised. This is, of course, again, looking at the evaluation of, of feasibility. It's a, this area is well-suited for an R-one rezone, to be able to handle that much infrastructure based on water, sewer, traffic, and drainage. I think we'll, can all be accommodated through the subdivision process. The vote from the planning commission was seven oh to approve.
Very good.
All right, well, I'll, if you're ready mo, for motion, chair. I will, uh, move to approve the proposed zone change from agriculture twenty-acre, A-twenty, to residential one acre, R-one, located approximately twenty-five hundred north, forty-five hundred west, Cedar City, Utah. And it's approximately sixty-point zero four acres, located within the section described within the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty, very good. Okay, number three on the agenda is, um, our public comment, uh, three-minute. Participant, um, should be, shouldn't repeat any comments, only the items on the agenda that are not on the agenda and, uh, no items related to commission role on the appeals board and comments should be directed to the commission, no attacks on people's character. Any comments? And please state your name.
Rose Clement, I just have, uh, two questions here. One is when you watch the YouTube version of this meeting, uh, when people step away and you can't hear them, it's very muffled. If you can do anything remote or have them get a click or whatever.
So I've, just to, to, I, I've actually bought a, uh, condenser mic for that.
Oh, awesome.
And it's been a little problematic. I, I'm going to keep working with it. The problem is it, getting the noise that you want and the noise that you, and not getting the noise you don't. So I, I will, I will continue, I've got the, like I say, I've got a condenser mic that's kind of an area mic. The other thing is, is we, I just, I have to be mean about telling people to speak into the microphone.
Right, well, this is just, it's a, yeah, disclosure or whatever.
Yeah, I, I totally understand and, and that is important, that we, we're all able to hear all of those comments.
People who speak want to hear what they have to say.
And just like Reed having to step away.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the point, well, no, it works, it just doesn't show up on the TV and it's obnoxious.
For some reason, yeah.
And my second thing is, um, there is so much, um, building going on and approval, changing zoning, et cetera. And there's all this talk about water. I got a big concern with that. Um, are we not shooting ourselves in the foot by doing this? Are, or is there really not a water issue? Um, it's a little confusing to me.
So, so there, yes, we have a water issue, but, um, with, with, with Enix City and the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District at least, if you want to do a development like we've approved today and they're furnishing water to those projects, they have to bring water that's nineteen thirty-four priority and older to the table. So water is going to, to, uh, control growth in our valley. When the water, when that old water's gone, it's going to slow things way down. And it's a natural, and that's the way it should operate. The, anytime government tries to get involved, whether to, to shut down, I mean, and even if, if we wanted to do the big M-word moratorium, I think the legislature's only given us the authority to do it for six months. And what happens, if you did that, if an entity like us or Cedar City or whoever did a moratorium, there'd be so, so much pent-up demand through that time, when the floodgates open, it could be worse. And so it's better to let the free market decide that. But, but really the water, uh, dates and priorities are going to control our growth in this valley. But yes, we do have a water problem and we, we're working, you know, on a lot of solutions.
Another, another thing that we all have to really remember is that's a personal property, right? Uh, water, you know, and you brought your water in when you built your house and somebody else already has water that are good water rights. You know, how, you can't stop that, you know, because they have that right.
Well, we're talking like the resoning and the development of, spreading and, and bringing more homes and more people into the area to not meet the needs of the water.
Those developers have the water, that's what I'm saying. The developers have the water, it's a, it's a personal property, right? So.
And, you know, we want, and you, you know, a lot of, a lot of us think, oh, there's lots of out of, out of town people coming in, but I want my kids and grandkids to live here. You know, I don't want to shut that off, close the door, so we have to export our children and grandchildren out of the valley either.
Right, that makes it very important.
And so that's, that's something to think about, but, uh.
I think this water is going to deter that down the road and, and we just have to be patient and, you know, we know that the economies have gone up and down in, in this area. We've all probably gone through that anyway, anybody that has any age like some of us do. And, and it can't, I don't see that it can keep going and going, you know? It, it, it always has a bubble and then it comes back down and so, uh, it's hard to see it. Uh, it is for us, I mean, I grew up here. But, but it's something that we got to remember, those personal property rights of, of land and of water. And, and, you know, if the people have those personal property rights, how do you say, well, I got mine, but you can't have yours, you know? So anyway, that's just something that, that I think, I think we just have to be patient and, and we're doing the best we can as far as zoning and, and, you know, that way.
So are you saying that potentially in the future, you could have a moratorium or the M-word?
No, 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 it's the.
When those rights are gone?
It's the free market that'll control that. When the, when the old water's gone, it's going to severely limit the, the ability to. Because the nineteen thirty-four water is, is the, is the safe yield date. Anything after thirty-four could be forfeited in the future as, as we move through time.
And the Water Conservancy District won't even accept any, they have to have those old water rights or they, they, you know, won't let them tie on to their, to their water.
Okay.
So in other words, there's an open market for water rights and then the scarcity of water will drive that. And, and, and to Paul's point, that, that will eventually have to limit the development, because you have to bring water when you develop. And you have to bring sufficiently old enough water, uh, rights. And so that, that's, that's the scarcity. And, and one of the things that you don't necessarily see, because it happens on the backend, is the price that developers or individuals are paying for water rights will continue to go up as it gets more scarce.
Which it really has significantly and that's going to make a difference too.
Well, I started on the city, Cedar City Council ten years ago. I think we were buying water for twenty-five hundred dollars an acre foot. And I believe there are some that closed last week for twenty-five thousand dollars. So in ten years, it's gone up that much. And that's just supply and demand.
Just concerned.
Well, thank you, that was a good discussion, that was a good discussion, Rose, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
May I just follow up with that for a little more explanation? I think it's important too, that we throw in, uh, a plug for the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District in moving forward with the ability to develop a pipeline from, uh, the Pine Valley and Wa-wa Valleys that we have water rights on through the state engineer, so that it will do, I think, a couple of things. It will help provide water for the needed development and maybe control the prices, uh, a little bit of what available now.
You bring in fifteen thousand more acre feet, it, the price could drop substantially.
Right, exactly. And so it is, I appreciate the comments that it is based on market. But I think that, uh, government's role is to also try to make availability where we can in the Conservancy District. And I think, uh, because you mentioned the Enix and, and the Conservancy District, but all Cedar City, you know, the municipalities, and that's something that I wanted to. And that's something that I wanted to just ask, you know, in the discussion that I think would be good for us to have, is when the county approves subdivisions on wells, is that something we should consider as a date? Because now we are approving currently subdivisions that have wells on them that they're using nineteen sixty-five water. You know?
And that probably is.
We really should look at it.
Something that we ought to be aware of because we're just shooting ourselves in the foot because.
That water can be forfeited in fifteen years.
Yeah, exactly. We ought to at least be looking at maybe fifty or something. If we don't go to clear to thirty-four, you know, I, you know, my magic ball, crystal ball says, you know, that by the time we get that far down, the Conservancy District will have water in the pipeline and we may not have to go to the lower cut, but I can easily see us taking the first cut or maybe even the second. We, we ought to be looking at that.
I think we definitely should be because.
I hate to do that in many respects and tell people that, but I think that it would be irresponsible for us to approve a subdivision and then they're gonna lose our water in fifteen years.
Yeah.
Well, and if you want to know what your property's.
Thirteen years now. Twelve years.
If you want to know what your property's worth without water, it's, it's zero. It's worth nothing.
Yeah.
Will you move, move forward on something with that?
Yeah, yeah, we will.
We definitely need to discuss that.
We'll put that on the Planning Commission agenda and.
Good idea. Talk about them and, yep, great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Volney Moran. And I didn't quite catch the name of the lady who spoke first. Rose?
Rose Clement.
Thank you for your comments. I share her sentiments so much. When your treasurer came up here and gave her report, she's, she stood over here and she talked in a soft voice. And honestly, I couldn't understand a single word she said. And so, I guess the dilemma that we face is, who's gonna be rude? Is it gonna be you in the front saying, oh, John, you will be? I will be too if that's okay.
Well, like you reminded me, thank you for doing that.
Yes, well, we get lazy and we forget.
We can be, we can remind people in a pleasant tone of voice.
It's, you know, in, in, in a room, you, you know, you get used to where you can hear each other without necessarily speaking into the microphone, but there's a bigger audience.
Yes, and the thing is that when we're standing at the podium, we're speaking this way. But those behind us don't have that advantage. So, I, I thought this morning, well, maybe the problem was that this arm wasn't long enough, but that's not the problem. The problem is that people don't speak into the mic.
And those are directional microphones and so.
You could stand right here and whisper. But if you stand over here, it's not gonna work. All right, that's enough. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Any more comments, public comments? Okay, we'll move on to number four. Discussion of possible approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one amending the Iron County Subdivision Construction and Design Standard. Reed? Oh, did I do? Maybe you. Oh, whoops, maybe it was me.
Oh, you know what? Chanel did.
Are we still giving Reed a different agenda?
I, I took the first agenda you gave me, so I probably have the wrong one. Whoops.
Yeah. We're on Resolution twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is the, and Rich can join me here when he's ready to speak. This is a recent, the recent, it was about a year ago when we amended the construction and design standards. In fact, I pulled this up just for this purpose. You can see the, the construction, subdivision construction and design standards were first adopted in two thousand five. And we've made several amendments since then. And in two thousand twenty-one, we did it when we added the R4K zone. And so, we needed to say what was required in that zone. Now, as Rich and you are aware, Rich has been working on the new road standards and in the need of trying to improve our, our roads in the county, especially in new subdivisions when we see them deteriorating rather quickly and not holding up to the demands of the roads as construction occurs over the first few years of that subdivision. And so, these standards, and you should have a copy of those in your packet. There are eleven sheets that show the, and it relates mostly to the under, under girding of the road and the, the road base, the type of, the standard for the type of material that is to be used and the depth of that. And of course, a lot of that's based off of soil reports and the type of soil there in terms of how much needs to be overexcavated and recompacted. But rather than the idea, I think, that Rich has espoused, which I think we all support, is that rather than just overexcavating everything and then compacting it all back down, we ought to be bringing in some other road material with some rock in there that can sustain a little more weight than what we've been able to do by just compacting the native materials, especially when those native materials are all clay. And it just doesn't hold up over time. So, this is a fairly simple matter. I can scroll through all of these slides. It all relates to that. A lot of them were there and haven't been unchanged, but we've tried to, to standardize them by titles and names. And we do have, I'll make special note of this one. This is a shared access driveway standard that we are also applying in areas of the county where we haven't had a standard specific to something that isn't currently on the county road standard that we are using in, in our WUWE code, the Utah Wildland Urban Interface Code, where they're doing a project in a rural area that the county, the roads are not on the county maintenance system. But we're saying that you need a better road to go out there and do this cluster of group homes, for example. You know, we had a couple of projects where they got two properties side by side and they can put seven, eight homes out there that they want to do a short-term rentals out in Burl. Well, the road to that is six miles of old road that you can't get people in and out of. And, and the only standard that we can apply, since it's not a subdivision, where we can do off-site improvements into the property, is to, we apply the WUWE code standard. And that is, in, in the WUWE code, I keep saying WUWE code, I'm sure you're familiar with that, the Wildland Urban Interface Code, requires a certain fire level road that's called a fire apparatus road. And we're using this standard as the shared access driveway, which is a similar width and requirement of improvement of sixteen feet of an all-weather surface and has a standard for graded compact compaction of the subgrade so that it's a better road and a fire truck and emergency response can get in and out of that. So, we're using that to apply here. And so, even though that says for a shared driveway, we're using that. Here's a single access driveway. Some of these we had before.
And is that a gravel road?
Yes, it is a gravel road.
But that's great to have a standard on that because.
And then the other thing to add to this, besides just those updated cross-sections, is the idea that, and this came up just recently, it's, it's been up several times, but adding the chip seal road standard in there. Because before we said you either had gravel road or we've had paved road as a standard. The county upgrades roads, but we've said in the subdivisions, when asphalt pavement, paved road is required, we're requiring asphalt pavement, not just chip seal. But thanks to Rich and Bruce, in some of our recent discussions, we've had some concern about where we have a road development or a subdivision development that requires a road improvement. And it comes off of a chip seal road or an already asphalt paved road. And it's out in an area where that's the only gravel road that there is. It's a real nuisance and expense to the county to run a grader out there to plow a little bit of gravel when they have to travel some miles on a chip seal or an asphalt road to get to that little bit of gravel. And so, this now would require a chip seal road in A20, RA20, RR20, and the industrial intensive agricultural zone when, when the required road, road improvements are adjacent to an approved, accepted road that is already either chip sealed or asphalt pavement. The improvement must be at a minimum of a chip seal road surface. In other words, if that subdivision interior roads are A20, but they take access off of a chip seal road, then those roads need to be asphalt or chip sealed at least as a minimum so that we don't have just a gravel road out there in the middle of nowhere that we have to go out and grade that we haven't been doing. So, that's really where that comes in. And then the second component of this change is the second paragraph in red. Upon improving the road to county standard and with dedication and county approval acceptance, the road will be added to the county maintenance system at that time. Now, our previous standard, the way that we've always, the way it's been written, not always as it's been applied, but Resolution ninety-eight dash one said that in the event that a new subdivision comes in, the county would consider taking it over for the maintenance responsibility when the subdivision was built out fifty percent. What we found over the years is that's created a significant challenge because those roads were never maintained very well. And so, they weren't kept up and therefore, when we, they said, okay, we have fifty percent. When's the county gonna take them over? They said, well, we'd say, well, when you bring them back up to county standard because now they've been unmaintained. And that doesn't ever go over very well. We felt and the road department has agreed that we would be better off accepting them once they've been brought up to county standard, let the subdivisions fill in, but we're taking care of them at that point. We feel like that, once they've done that, they've made the burden of our, our responsibility to take and maintain those. So, that, this makes that change of that resolution. Rich, do you want to address that any more than that? Or anything in the road standards?
I'm happy to take any questions, though.
So, you're saying that these road standards have to be brought up to county specs before the development goes in? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're saying that before the county will accept maintenance of the roads.
Right, they have to bring it up standard.
They have to bring them up to standard, but once they.
But we make it very clear to them in the beginning before they.
That's correct. As part of the subdivision, they do it, not in order to subdivide. We do the bonding. They can do it over the next, you know, they have a year to put those in and bring them up to standards with the subdivision. But, you know, in any other situation, that may be a little different.
We've actually had people approach us in the last two weeks about doing a phase-in process in which each phase would then.
Talk into the mic a little more.
Sorry. With each phase, as they come in, then they would do those improvements. It wouldn't be a lump improvement over a larger project. But the goal would be that we would have them make this investment. And because they've made such an incredible investment, then the counties, if you want to say it this way, the care it is that we then take them over and they, they, they find that very palatable, that they're not going to maintain them over time while we wait for their subdivision to fill in. But no, it's not all at once, Commissioner. And it's not at the time of, of approval. They will have to be done at the time they receive an occupancy permit. So, we can continue forward with building permits and other portions like we do now. But until they, they have completed those infrastructure improvements, their bond is, is being held and the clock hasn't start for release for that. But they still move forward with their project. Or not.
Yes. Any other questions about?
I have another question. It's a little bit off that, but it reminded me of it. On Iron Springs, there was some construction going on and they were pulling right off of the mud onto the Iron Springs and the residents were complaining about that. Is there some kind of a standard that we can make them put some, you know, if they're doing construction, that we can have some gravel put there to take a little of the?
They're supposed to do that. That's part of the conditional use permit that they will have done.
For a particular project, but also if there's an encroachment permit, if there's an encroachment permit issued in the county right away, if they're doing work in the county right away, then the engineer's office requires that as part of an encroachment permit.
Okay.
And to answer that specific question, they dealt with that before I got out there because they were made aware of it.
Oh, okay.
I think from Bruce from the road department.
I think it might have been.
Someone made them aware. I didn't, I didn't have to go out. They fixed it.
So, very good, very good. Nice.
Okay. Any other questions about the resolution or the new standards?
Can I, can I, can I add to this? And I appreciate the support that I received. That this, this was brought to, to my attention by Phil Schmidt. He, he was one of those. And I consulted with Joel Myers, both of whom I greatly appreciate their input. I appreciate the facilitation that Commissioner Cousins made with the city and Mayor Green hosting us and had a number of participants who were stakeholders in this process. And so, it wasn't taken lightly. It didn't happen, you know, overnight. This has been several months in the making. And with those experts, particularly Joel's input from standards of soils point of view and then, and, and I, I thought about bringing that picture. I took Maryland out there and I took Reed by. Just behind my subdivision, there's a road that's less than three years old that has.
It's got big cracks in it.
That crack is, it, it literally caused the, there's a, there's a peak in the road from what appears to have been a, the only thing I can imagine was a cement truck because it looks like it came up between its dooleys. And, and that's no incrimination on, on the developer or anyone else. It's simply that the base structure was unable to, in that wet season that that happened, which was just a month or so ago, it couldn't sustain that kind of load.
Yeah, and that's, that's the point. And we brought Ray Bullock in, another excavator, very reputable to have some input too. But we have to maintain these roads over time and it's a return on investment. It might cost us just a little bit more. We gave a little bit, but added some. But like Phil Schmidt said, when you're, when you're building these subdivisions out, that's when you have all this big equipment in there, the real heavy, after it's done, you don't have near the.
Or the opportunity.
Right.
Because it would, it'd be millions of dollars to tear them up and rebuild them from base up. And that's the perfect time to do it is during the initial phases. It, it will be a little more expensive on that end, but turning them over to the county, we're receiving a much better product.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
And that'll save the taxpayers lots of money in the future, having redo these roads. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Hey, you have any more discussion? Call for a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one amending the Iron County Subdivision Construction and Design Standards, Section one oh nine Road Standards, Cross-Sections and Exhibits.
Second?
Moved in second, all in favor? Aye.
I will mention as well that the Planning Commission also recommended approval, seven zero, on these standards.
Yeah, and there's several, there's several builders on that board and, and they were all really in favor of it, so I thought that was nice, so. Okay, we'll move to the next one, number five.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two Flood Channel Setback Standards. This is the one that we started, I don't know, six or eight months ago when we were talking about doing some quichapah standards that would change the elevations for quichapah and tell us where we could build and not. And as we got into that discussion, we started saying, well, we also need to do the flood channels. And then it rained, you know, and then we said, oh, our priority really should be the flood channels over the quichapah. And so, that's where this came from. Rich did a really good job in evaluating capacities. And as you see on the exhibit here, the channel setbacks are based off of sections of the road, of the channels. In our, in our ordinance, currently, we have a standard that says that nothing, no structure or building can be placed within one hundred feet of the banks of a flood channel. And so, I said, well, where, what, where are the flood channels? What flood channels? Where are they? And how can that apply uniformly everywhere? Because Coal Creek certainly has a much larger requirement for setback than Shirts Creek up the canyon, you know, or any of the others. And we have a lot of them throughout the valley and this isn't, this isn't complete. This is only a list on this graphic of five, yeah, five sections of flood channel that we've established a setback on. We will continue on through the rest of the county for other sections, you know, and work out west. We will continue on through the rest of the county for other sections, you know, and work out west and work in Perowan Creek and, and Little Creek and establish setbacks based off of those as well. But this is a great start. Rich has done it based off of NRCS data available through Bull and Collins and studies that have been done. And I'll let Rich talk to that a little bit. And trying to establish a proper width and setback for the flood channel and a design for the flood channel that gives us protection. So let me have Rich explain that a little bit better.
And as Dan, as Dan and I were out cleaning that chan, flood channel, what was it going west off of Westview, north of S U Farms? You know, as we, as we completed cleaning that channel, we got up to those homes that were built in Cedar City. And the wall is basically right where that V is, right on the edge. And, and there is, there is, it would scare me to death to have a, have a house right there. I mean, if you saw the amount of water. And, and before you start, how receptive, we talked to Cedar City about this, how receptive are they to adopting these as well?
Well, on that, on that note, it's been presented to them. I've emailed it over to Jonathan and, and, and asked them to consider that. In fact, I was talking to, excuse me, I was talking to Reed. It would be nice if our, in, we can't do this everywhere, but there are times when we do an annexation to Cedar City that I wish we could say, and while you take that portion, here's the flood channel that goes with it. Because it's an important idea that we have this, um, this channel that runs through the three of them.
We have standing because we have to maintain them, right?
We end up with whatever comes out because we are always downstream. And, and that makes it very, very interesting to us. And we have great cooperation with the city. But at this point, I can't answer that question. I don't know what they're, they're.
I hope they do.
I do too.
Based on what we dealt with out there.
Yes.
Right, and, and particularly with the growth that's happening in the south of Cedar City coming off of, uh, Tipple Road, that new development out there and that crossing under the interstate. I think I've mentioned, uh, to several people that if you follow the, the upper, I don't know what to call it. It's, it's not part of Shirts Creek. It's, it's really coming, um, north of there. But when you cross over Westview Drive, uh, everything coming out of those developments are coming down into that area where the city sewer, main line is coming. Well, it crosses Westview Drive in a thirty inch culvert. And it's, it's a huge amount of water.
Not attic, but.
Yeah, and it, and it's, it's kind of, so I, I think I've, I, I'm going to continue to, uh, coordinate and cooperate with Jonathan and the city on that. And, and hopefully, um, the city council adopts something similar.
And, and ENEC, right? We need all the municipalities to adopt this.
I hate to interrupt the discussion, but I think it'd be appropriate. I was just going to text right now, uh, Rob Dodson, ask him to put this on the coordinating council agenda for next Wednesday.
Oh, yes, that'd be a great place to bring that up.
Commissioners there and Rich can be there. It'd be nice for us to present this as having been adopted now by the county and would suggest their adoption and coordination so that we are more uniform. I think that'd be appropriate.
Throughout the county, yeah, that's, that's great.
Yes, I gave, uh, Rob and, and Perawan Cleve, the, the city, the road standard that we were proposing before it was just a moment ago adopted. And the same, I thought I had also sent this exhibit, but we, resending it, we need to have a discussion. This is a valley wide issue. It's a great issue. It's, it's one that needs some, some, um, important, uh, it's important that we look forward. I looked at some old documents that, uh, I think I've talked to you all about. The nineteen seventy-seven Corps of Engineer recommendations. They were wonderful recommendations, but at that time there were only ten thousand people in Cedar City. And by extension, the county was smaller then too. And everything they referred to, to the west of the airport, they called wastelands. Um, not because it was, you know, despairing, but because that's, was farmland and it was okay to just let the water sheet flow. Well, those wastelands are now subdivisions. And we need to be able to figure out what we're going to do. And this is a, this, I wouldn't say this is a final step, but this is certainly a first step. With this adoption, um, when a subdivision comes to us asking for, uh, conditions of use, we will be able to say yes. And we want a dedication of reserved area that would allow, uh, county equipment to come in there and protect those homes later.
Explain how that works on those to the side.
Right.
Being able to get the trucks in there to load.
Oh, we needed a red one, didn't we? Uh, so, so what, what we've done is we've gone from the center line, first of all, and not from the meandering bank, which, which is always changing. Because depending on how much fill we have to excavate and put onto the bank, that bank kept moving around. So we went from the, the general center line. So what we've reserved is a, is a working area. I can't see it. From here, it looked like a W, but it's sixteen feet that we've reserved on the top of the channel, right there. And that sixteen feet will allow most of our equipment, including dump trucks, to back in and be loaded when necessary. At the same time, we are holding out a non, um, I don't want to say it's a not a development area, but it's a non-structure area for seventy-five feet from the center of the channel, which would, uh, would, which would restrict any fencing, any small buildings, tree planting of, uh, that would, like cottonwoods that might grow up, those kind of things. We're not trying to take property. We're just simply trying to look at the future and say, if, if the same things that happened last summer happen, we're not hindered in getting there to protect the properties that have now been developed. The other item here is, as you see, uh, the capacity up top shows the recorded peak flows of Coal Creek, Shirts Creek and Quichapah Channel. I'm calling Quichapah Channel everything that goes out of the Woodbury Split and goes to Quichapah, that forty percent. And if you look at those historic flows, um, you'll see that actually Shirts Creek is surprisingly larger than anything on that list, which we had, didn't have problems last summer with. But it's five hundred cubic, yeah, cubic feet per second.
But we could.
Greater, but we could and we will, because as they develop, that's more hardened surface. Knowing that I couldn't get everything, it just was not reasonable because these channels would have to be much bigger and wider. The goal was set for seventy-five percent of that flow. And that's what these numbers show is a potential to, to, to take on seventy-five percent of the recorded historic flow. Now, the benefit is if you look at K, see each, each, each item is listed with a, uh, a letter. Z being the seventy-five, a hundred feet to any home. X being the half the width at the top of the channel. And K being what's retained afterwards, which will be fluctuate, which will fluctuate within that seventy-five feet. Seventy-five feet is the setback from the center of channel. So depending on the width of the channel, depending on the need there, that might be greater or less. But as I explained to the planning commission, it's almost like a secondary overflow channel. So if this, uh, if we receive flood stage waters again, we will have a small secondary flow channel to the side of the channel, which isn't, uh, our goal. But it is thinking to the future, that there will not be anything in there that would be, uh, loss to the public, uh, of their home and, and the structure inside. But it would allow this nice, uh, secondary flow path, which will be anywhere from twenty to thirty feet wide. And you can imagine how much water would fit in, in that if it was only a foot deep. And, and it'll be behind their properties. So it, it's, uh, uh, it's a first draft in the sense that we'll adopt it and we'll continue to work forward and improve it as necessary as we see the opportunities. But we want to be respectful of property owners and not ask, um, to take.
Take their property.
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm thinking. You know, we are asking for a dedication of that seventy-five feet. Just not, similar to what we asked for a road. Now, what can be used back there are gardens, utilities, walking paths, um, trails. Number of things that are, are not going to get in the way of, of, uh, floodwaters. And allowing them to build up and then surge over and flood homes.
Very good. And the, the homes would be over further and build up, which our standards built, build those up and so.
Right, if they're in, if they're in a floodplain, they need to meet, uh, the standards of, uh, of FEMA and, and our county standards, which is a currently at least a foot above the flood, floodplain. Now, I've spoken to this and I was, I'll, I'll jump to the side just a moment. April first, uh, uh, the National Flood Insurance Program went to what they called two point O, which is no longer a, a, um, an in or out type of situation. It used to be that people were either in the floodplain or they were not in the floodplain. And it was a very distinct line. But as of April first of this year, the federal government has changed that. And now it's a distance to the source of potential flooding, height of the building. There's actually six criteria. There used to be you just either were or you weren't. And, and what they realized that if I lived fifty feet from another person's home and my house was inside the floodplain, the likelihood of that home that was a neighbor were very high that they would also be flooded. But for the magical reason that there was a line drawn, they weren't. And so they, they've come up with a new plan, which is more equitable, which says that your source is important, your construction is important, your height is important to your first floor. And, uh, three other criteria, I just can't remember. But that will cause, uh, equity in their flood insurance program. And as a county, we're portion, we are part of the National Flood Insurance Program. And in order to maintain our participation, it's ordinances like this that keep us in good graces with them. If we weren't to, if we were to stop doing these type of things, we would actually be kicked out of the program. Being kicked out of the program means that our citizens are kicked out. It's not really the county, but it, but we represent them by doing good, uh, management. And then the citizens have an opportunity to participate. And that's what, what that means to them. So I'm sorry for that digression.
Yep. I guess we call for motion unless you have any more discussion.
I'll move to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two-two, adopting the Iron County flood channel setback standards. And this includes a typical cross section setbacks table and exhibits.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 These were done by resolution. We do still have that one section in the ordinance, but we didn't have time to public, public, publish for a public hearing on that to change the ordinance. And we thought we'd be better off adopting these by resolution because they don't require the public hearing. And then we can modify them as we go forward. Because as, as Rich mentioned, we will have, you know, others coming still. And we'll just keep adding to this and revise as necessary. We'll look at the Quichapah next, the, the Quichapah Lake area, and then we'll continue. Once we have more information available from NRCS on the flood channels along, uh, the front here between Little Creek and Summit, we will have additional, uh, setbacks for those flood channels. So we'll continue to keep those updated. But we'll come back hopefully within the next month or so when we can get a planning commission recommendation for the ordinance change and get that hundred foot out of that ordinance so we don't have the conflict. Otherwise, thank you very much and especially thank you for changing the agenda round. Makes me done, so appreciate that, John.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to number six. Possible ratification of a fiscal incentive grant from the Division of Outdoor Recreation. And, uh, and that's the thing on it. Um, the grant will hire a GSI person to help mapping the entire off, uh, highway vehicle trail system. Purchase a flatbed trailer, purchase that OHV machine and other miscellaneous trail materials and supplies for trail maintenance. Mike Worthen.
That's it. Got it correct. And, and this is a grant from the, uh, fiscal incentive grant that the state offers once a quarter to the counties and cities and whoever that want to use that, those funds to design, develop, maintain.
Will that pound a little?
Maintain, uh,
There you go.
The OHV trail systems. And that's what this does. It'll allow us to, the, the GIS person is, is kind of very important in this. And in that, uh, this person will take the maps that we've got and put them into a more user friendly format where people can do flyovers. They can look at spots that they want to travel. And it'll also, uh, highlight local businesses where they can eat, where they can sleep, where they can get their trail, their vehicles maintained, things like that.
Oh, that's neat. Um, so did we get approval for the extra monies that we needed for the OHV that went up in price?
Just, just your email is all.
Can we do that along with this? Um, so do you want to talk about that a little bit?
It's just, is when I put in for the grant, I, I went off the state contract and asked, uh, businesses to give me a, a quote on what they would buy. A, a side by side force, uh, actually a six seater now, they, they make them, machine that could be used by the county. And, uh, they gave me an, uh, quote. This took about, uh, three months to get the, the grant approved. Once it, I got notification that it was awarded, I called the, uh, shop that had offered that quote. And, because I had heard from other counties that a lot of the places weren't honoring the state contract because it was costing them more with the increases and, and whatever else.
Our inflation.
Yes, and so, uh, they told me that they would honor the state grant if it was, because they're being told about seven percent more. So seven percent more onto that cost was about two thousand dollars.
Okay, so, um, we probably need to approve that extra cost on that one in the motion, right?
Um, yes, sorry. And, uh, Mike, that will, that won't be covered by the grant or will it?
It, it will, it won't be covered by the grant. The, the grant was, the, the cost of the machine was about twenty-seven hundred. Uh, the, that's all that the grant would cover. And now it's around twenty-nine hundred.
Okay, and so from the.
Yeah, twenty-nine thousand, excuse me.
Zero there. But, and then that would probably have to affect the, the, the budget as well down the road and necessitate of an eventual, uh, budget adjustment for the commissioners. But, but so that extra two thousand would have to come out of the county coffers, not the grant, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, and we've talked to Dan about that. And if we've approved that, we can move forward with that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I, uh, ask for more?
I don't know. Move for approval of ratification of a fiscal incentive grant from the Division of Outdoor Recreation Services. I F F Y, it's the year twenty-two, quarter three, January thirty-first. The grant will hire a GIS person to help map the entire off-highway vehicle trail system, purchase a flatbed trailer, purchase an OHV machine and other miscellaneous trail materials and supplies for trail maintenance. And note that that, uh, cost on the OHV machine has risen approximately seven percent or about two thousand dollars. And the county is willing to, uh, to make up that cost through county funds.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jonathan, have you got? You have that contractor that, okay.
And that's already been signed, so. Do you need a copy? Or have you already gotten one?
I've already got one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to seven. Discussion approval of lease renewal for Fifth District Juvenile Court and Fifth District, Guardian Alitem Office with the State of Utah. uh Guardian Adlitem Office with the State of Utah Administrative Office of Courts Contracts.
So this is a renewal of a lease, um the uh Utah State Courts leasing from us. Uh, the Guardian Adlitem um and the juvenile there in the Justice uh Court, Justice, Justice, yeah, building.
Justice Building.
Thank you, I can't think of the name of the building. Anyway, that place, um and and the contract um is ongoing and the same price, um which is two thousand dollars per year. So a five-year contract uh for a total of ten thousand dollars. And they're 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 good clients and I think it's, I think, well, I think it's important that we uh continue to support those valuable uh services to the community.
Yep.
Sorry, I try not to insert my opinion.
I'll move to approve the lease renewal for Fifth District Juvenile Courts and Fifth District Guardian Adlitem Office with the with the State of Utah. Yeah, Administrative Office of Courts, contract number ninety dash one eight one seven, amendment number three.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Um, number eight, discussion of uh possible approval to dispose of two lots acquired from the dissolution of Cedar Highlands. And there's the APN, uh original acquired with corridor preservation funds for the intent of realigning the road. We're gonna have Dan visit with us about that.
Okay, just I'll do a real quick background on this. Um, Cedar Highlands, back when it was an entity, um working with our prior county engineer, um came up with a plan to use county corridor preservation funds to purchase two lots on either side of the main road that goes up the face of of uh Cedar Mountain there to Cedar Highlands with the intent to realign.
Only one side. Not two, either side, there's one side.
Hmm? There's two lots. And they're on the same side of the road. Well, that shows what I know. We bought two lots with the intent to realign the road. Maybe it's when the realignment, the original proposed realignment was done, then there would be land on either side. That's what it was. And then with the idea being that we would then sell that land or they would sell that land and whatever revenue they got from that sale would come back to the county's corridor preservation fund. Well, halfway through that process, Cedar Highlands was dissolved as an entity. And so the county.
As a municipality.
As a municipality, so they're back in the unincorporated county. Um, so we made a movement to retain those, the the ownership of that. So the county stepped forward um and retained that ownership. Otherwise, that land would have eventually ended up owned by the school district because any unclaimed um assets from the dissolution of that city would have eventually been anyways, given back to the school district. Because it was corridor preservation money that is is set aside by Utah Code for very specific purposes, we thought we needed to go ahead and get that back. So we did. There is some um entities, uh Cedar Highlands HOA, um Central Island County Water Conservancy District that have been reaching out to the county to want to build a county as though we are builders doing something with those lots. Um, they're owned by the the corridor preservation fund, which has, it it can spend money on planning and on acquiring um land and um um easements to build corridor. We can't, we can't do anything other than that with it. So the question has been, do we still want to do that realignment? Maybe Rich can come up and and can talk about that. Um, or should we leave the road as it is, sell the lots and and move on? So that's what's on the agenda.
Do you, do you want to see pictures? Because I can show you pictures, John's got a flash drive. Let's take a second and look at those.
Right there.
So I've looked at the realignment plans that were previously um prepared. And these two lots, which actually um if you orient yourself and want to become familiar with them, as you come into Cedar Highlands, coming up the face of the mountain, just as you enter into Cedar Highlands uh on the right-hand side. Do I have a control of this?
Uh, you can soon as I start it, yep. Is that the right one?
Uh, this will work. There's there's several.
The clicker will do it.
Well, this is great. How do I do that? Reed?
Does it not do it?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
So, so there were several routes proposed. This is, this is this, uh Ghost Civil did this years ago. And let's go down here. All right, down in the right-hand corner, uh you can see, thanks Reed, you can see the two lots that we own. They're right there. That's at the beginning of Cedar Highlands. And um Sunrise Engineering proposed that that part of it. That's their title over there on the left-hand side. Uh, they proposed this loop that would come out into the two lots and then come back in. Where they're starting is actually on BLM property. It's uh, and so that's, that's another portion of this hurdle. Um, but those two lots, if you were to to stand on the road and look at them, they are significant drop down. It would be hundreds of thousands, if not millions of tons of material just to, just to fill that that uh area there to put a road in. And there is nowhere on-site to obtain that that material. It would have to be obtained for or hauled in from somewhere. Uh, across the road where you might think of that and say, well, uh, what makes nice is a cut and fill situation. The homeowners with their homes there wouldn't appreciate that because those are both built-up lots. So there is no close by material. Everything to the south side of that road is a dropaway. And so as I look at this and I've commented on this to uh to the folks at Cedar Highland um Association and to others, this is a very short piece of road that we're trying to improve. And that's all they're talking about is the uh, is that loop right there. Um. Actually has a.
Barely steep, right?
Just to change the grade by doing an S curve.
To change the grade. The grade already is ten to twelve. Just before you get there is seventeen percent up to that next corner. That's a significant, uh, and so I I wondered many times, why would we approve or go into uh improving a short section of road when there's so much road before it in much more serious condition for steepness? And and so when Dan asked me, and I've looked at this and looked at it from several different ways, site visits, I I've concluded those two lots, um we don't, we would rather spend that kind of money elsewhere to improve the road. In fact, thinking about this road up to Cedar Highlands, the best way to improve it would be many more switchbacks. To to gain the grade, you'd need to go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. These are are uh pretty steep runs in some of these places, not in all the places. But the, you know, with the restrictions you have with the land of uh drainage and well, it's not even, I mean, physical constraints.
Yeah.
Almost every one of those dark green lines is a uh, is a, is a broad channel of runoff. And that's a lot of fill or bridging over.
Who proposed to go the different route to come into the subdivision from the north?
So, so this is an old one from Ghost Civil that that looked to go that way. And this is from Ghost Civil. So they were looking at the topography and and coming in from the north uh that way. Once we're into the Cedar Highlands even though, um, it gets steep in places again. And again, we're, we're reduced to at least before Cedar Highlands, it's one landowner, BLM. Here, we'd be dealing with um quite a number of of landowners trying to improve that road. Again, for for approximately um four hundred feet of improvement, when we have almost, um, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't come prepared with the number of miles. But just from the entrance of Cedar Highlands back down to to uh Cedar City's paved road there below the water tanks is it's like four and a half miles. So for four hundred feet, and we have four hundred and a half miles of of poor road, it just didn't seem to to be a good investment at this time.
Yeah.
And we, even if we were to let the lots go, I can't see that. I think, John, will you show, look at one of the other files? I'm going to show you what uh Sunrise Engineering gave us for a proposed cost.
This is it?
Yeah.
Sorry, and then you won't be able to control it. Well, maybe you could.
Oh, okay.
Look at you go.
Oh, okay.
I didn't think you could.
Right here. Can you, we want to see that. So this was their, for that, that loop, go on, John, can you pull it down for me? Just for that portion of loop, when they, when they did this, I think going down a little further.
Three quarters of a million dollars? What is that? I can't.
Eight hundred sixty-two.
Eight hundred sixty-two.
Eight hundred sixty-two million dollars to improve four hundred feet of road. What?
Thousand.
Oh, I I misspoke, I said a million. I meant eight hundred sixty-two.
Million here, a million there.
I've seen you talking real money.
So, so it basically would improve four hundred feet of road at that cost, and that's an old cost. And if you go up into the report, it talks about the cut and fill and said this is an estimate, which it would take more site-specific engineering. And so those costs were not, uh, let's see.
Yeah.
I think they're right here. Earthwork for phase one is estimated at approximately a hundred twenty-four thousand cubic yards of cut and fill material. Polinary service used for the planning not survey grade indicated earthwork volumes. There were proposed alignment matches existing alignment just below the subdivision based on a visual understanding existing road corridor. And if subsurface is incorrect, the volume of earthwork for this area may be reduced by as much as twenty-four thousand cubic yards. If there, if that were so, there would be a savings. However, for the current project, that was left, uh, we have left the full volume amount. Um, that, like I said, is is a lot of of tonnage. And I can't, in my mind, figure out where it's going to come from.
So if you can't cut and fill because you can't cut from across the other side of the road, it's just fill. So that cost is severely underestimated.
Big time.
That's my opinion. I I I see it perhaps as as with no cut, perhaps a million cubic yards. Because if you were standing there and looking, it does not look as promising. Kendall did a uh some work for me and and sent me over a a contour of that area, which which looks actually more favorable. And and I I'll trust the contours, but look how big that loop is. It it goes.
Big loop.
It it's more than four hundred feet long.
Wow.
But now, I will say, we have not discussed this uh with Cedar Highlands.
I'm sorry, I was not aware of this being on the agenda. And I I feel like, and I certainly don't want, I'm not opposed to selling it. I think we, it does make sense based on what Rich has found. My only concern would be that I think it would be appropriate to have a little more discussion with Cedar Highlands before we make this decision. I know that Cedar Highlands Homeowners Association wasn't the ones that did this. This was really a Cedar Highlands Town uh decision, action. And and they didn't know that it was really that beneficial either. I think it would just be nice as a courtesy to them to have this discussion, explain what Rich has determined and what the um his analysis has been. And and since Rich has been here, we've top been talking about trying to look at all of the old proposals and see which one's best. And and I appreciate Dan being sensitive to the cost that these guys are trying to incur on us because they think we own these lots and can develop them. Uh, and and if in the end we determine that this is not in our best interest, then we should sell them, and I agree. But I'm just wondering if it would be okay to, before we dispose of them, to at least have a conversation with Cedar Highlands to see if they're interested in doing something. It's within their subdivision. If they wanted to take that on, you know, that that would be something that I think we ought to at least accommodate that discussion.
Well, the point is well taken. This is not a new problem, uh, and so we don't need to.
It's not a big rush thing.
Yeah, it is urgent, but it's not.
But not.
Well, we continue to get bills from the Central County Water, Kenney Water, Ken, right, but but I'm just saying.
Haven't communicated with them in the last few months, especially in light of this, and I think that would be nice.
We continue to get bills from the Water District, from the Homeowner Association, and we've just got to say, look, guys, you know.
It's just a matter of openness to them and trying to work with them.
So what what are you suggesting as far as a meeting? Do you, do you guys just want to, do we need to meet as?
Do we table this and put it on the next agenda and invite them to come?
No, I I think it'd be nice to meet with them in between meetings, have this back on the agenda, have a meeting between now and then and say, we've got this on the agenda for disposal. We wanted to visit with you and make sure that you were aware of that and see if you had any interest in that and let you know where we are in the process. They, they have been earnestly trying to get the county to be more involved in taking over some responsibility there, recognizing that there's a whole lot of other people using that road than just the people that live there. We've had traffic counters up there a couple of different times trying to establish what that difference is based on times of the year and trying to determine what that extra traffic is. And I I just think that it's going to appear appear as a slap in the face if we just do this without even talking to them.
Yeah.
And I I think out of respect, their efforts and their interests, it would just be nice to have that opportunity.
Yeah.
Can I talk? I'm I'm not, I wasn't, that wasn't a slight, I just, we we sometimes we get, we have to like take a number. Um, is the homeowners association, and I agree, I just, I agree with what you say, I I totally agree. I don't know if they're, are they in a position to to, as an entity, to do anything?
They're collecting homeowners association fees.
They they have money and they are, they are, they've looked at whether or not they wanted to make some road improvements anywhere down the stretch. They've, they've been trying to cobble together just a maintenance program, you know, to just keep them bladed. And they, they couldn't even get a contractor this year to go up and do them. They've really struggled.
They finally did, but it was a struggle for them.
They're, I don't know that they're in a position to buy these lots and do that kind of improvement. They're certainly not by themselves. But uh, and I think in the end, this is probably what will happen. But I'm just saying it would be nice for them to be aware that this is what we're considering and then let them, give them an opportunity.
In nineteen eighty-four, when this original, when the original plot was uh considered, the the then county commission expressly like made them in writing, say, look, the county's not taking over these roads. The the grades are too steep, it's too problematic, it's, it's a, it's a seasonal situation. And uh, and so you, historically, you kind of have that that we're up against. And and then conversely, you, there's more traffic than there ever was, you know? I remember snowmobiling up there as a kid and there wasn't anything up there. Uh, and so it 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 definitely, I mean, it would be a huge sea change, not to mention it sounds like quite expensive for the county to to make a change there, but but perhaps, and that's again, why I'm glad I'm sitting in this seat, it may be worth down the road to to consider that. But but I think the historical context of that, the, those roads were expressly not included under the route, county maintenance from the beginning be part of the, at least brought up in the discussion.
Who owns that road?
BLM.
BLM.
Yeah.
Well, when when Cedar Highlands was incorporated, BLM transferred the Title V right-of-way to Cedar Highlands town. And then the, well, we're talking from right here.
Right there, down to the city is BLM.
And it it's on BLM property, but the county has a Title V right-of-way.
The town that doesn't exist.
The, right. And BLM, and it expires in twenty-eight, I think, or twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-five, so in three more years, it'll. Yeah, 2025, so in three more years it'll expire. BLM was at the table, we had a discussion about this. And, and it's just time to get those players back together and to keep this moving.
We need to involve BLM.
Yes, BLM is absolutely a player. They would require, and, and when Steve was here, Steve Platt, they evaluated going around the loop, you saw some of those other options on this presentation. It's been an ongoing discussion. I think it's just, I, I don't know that it's not appropriate, and I agree, if that's not where the improvement needs to be made, we dispose of those. I totally agree with that. I think it's just a matter of getting them back on the table with BLM and with the homeowners association and having a look. Discussion, courtesy.
So, moving forward then, Commissioners, would you like me to put this on the next agenda? And in the meantime, we'll try and get that meeting set?
Yeah.
I'll set at the meeting.
Meeting.
So we need to move to table this?
Yeah.
Just till the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so I'd moved on Agenda Item Number Eight, I would move just to table that until the next commission meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, the main, the whole point of bringing it up was to have this discussion.
Great.
And if we were ready to take action, go ahead and take action. This is good, this has been good discussion.
Yeah.
I'm staying here for the next.
We're actually gonna go to 12 so that Wade can get back to work. So we'll have him come up, discuss possible approval of the cost estimate to modify the existing fuel system at the Iron County Road Department to be compatible with the state fuel network.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, we should maybe done that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was put on the agenda a little bit late. I did get in trouble for that, so.
You're being punished.
Yeah, I was being punished. So this is involved in the, the state taking over the site, the fuel tank there managing that site. In order to get that to their spec, in order to get it to be operable, there's some changes that we need to make. One of them is the, the electricity going to that, we might need to add some more, we might need to add some more conduit in the ground, the communication line coming from the building, going out to the site. There's no, there's no phone line there, so we're going to have to, we're going to actually move the, the monitoring system for the tank out to the, where the dispenser is and put a, a building in, this is a small four-by-four building, the state's going to put the bill on all that, but we might have to run some lines to that. So that, that additional cost was just over 11,000.
Eleven.
It was actually 11,700 what it was.
With the savings.
But that, that's just, that's worst-case scenario. I don't, I don't see it being that much because one of them was the dispenser.
We can do the work, right?
We're actually going to have a contractor.
Do that.
Yeah, they're, they're with the, they have a state contract with the state, so they're the cooperative. So they're the ones that'll have to do some of that work, which on the fuel tank and stuff like that and the dispenser. But I, I talked to them about doing some of the conduit work if we need to, and we can, we could dig that and put those, if we need to put another conduit in the ground, but, so.
Okay.
That was just, this, this, this cost was just worst-case scenario, so I don't see it being.
Quite that much.
Being that much. But like I said, the cost savings is going to, we're going to pay for that easy, so, yeah.
On the fuel cost savings, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we get a motion?
I'll move to approve Agenda Item 12, modifying the existing fuel system at the Iron County Road Department to be compatible with state fuel network and approximately 11,000, maybe less.
Yeah.
Right, good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thanks, Wade. Should we take a little break?
I, I need a little break.
Let's take, let's come back. Seven minutes, is that enough?
Yep.
Yep. Twenty after, yep. We still got a ways to go. Go back up.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay, let's get started back again after our little break and we are actually gonna jump forward to thirteen. Uh, we need to convene as the Iron County uh, Community Development and Rural Agency. And we'll have Danny Stewart talk to us about the solar.
Okay. Thank you Commissioners, thanks for jumping ahead for me, I appreciate that. These are the, the final four requests for reimbursement that we have with solar projects this year. Item thirteen is, you know what, I wrote the numbers down. I had one of Reed's agendas, so I swapped it out. I don't know how we end up with those. I wonder if people are printing the tentative agenda maybe?
That's what I did.
Okay. I'll have to start putting a warning on that email.
No, that's fine, I knew that's what I had done. But, but the four, uh, number, let's see, agenda item number thirteen is considering the uh, tax increment reimbursement for Utah Red Hills. Uh, the amount on that, I got these from Dan today. This is uh, five hundred sixty seven thousand, seven hundred thirty nine and fifty four cents. Uh, and I can just read through each of these if you'd like. So the next one is for the Three Peaks uh, solar, the amount on that, seven hundred four thousand, four hundred sixty dollars and ninety, ninety three cents.
Seven oh four what?
Seven oh four, four six zero. Ninety three.
Ninety three.
Uh, the next one is Cove Mountain One, two hundred twenty two thousand, eight hundred sixteen. And the final one is Cove Mountain Two, four hundred forty thousand, seven fifty eight and sixty seven cents.
Were there pennies on the Cove Mountain One?
There were not.
Even?
It was even.
Okay. What are the odds? Oh, one in a hundred.
These all came in before April first, that was the required date. Everything met uh, the agreements that we had with each of these. I didn't have any concerns, they all did what they said that they were going to do as far as that goes. I attached uh, packets that showed the uh, the worksheet that, that I supplied to them and then also the uh, materials that they sent back to me for review. But, other than waiting until the last minute, everything came through just fine.
Very good. I guess we can call for a motion. Do we need to do, can we do these all together?
You can do them as a group, yeah. And in fact, would you be opposed Danny in the future if we just do these as one agenda item?
I think that would be easier for everybody.
Okay. I mean, I, we, these are generally, to clarify, many times uh, renewal agencies don't even consider these. We just thought it would be best practice to kind of bring them back every year, talk about the dollars that are, you know, there, there's, there's a significant amount of tax revenue that actually comes in and, and then there's a portion that goes back out as a, as a rebate incentive. And so we decided a long time ago to, to to make this part of the process, but there's no reason to draw it out.
Just out of curiosity, with the many we're refunding, how much of this did we keep? Just curi, just.
They're, they're each different, I mean, we have anywhere from, Dan's gone, but about sixty seven percent, oh, on this side.
The, the old ones, the old ones were a seventy, thirty split, um, the new ones are a sixty, ten, forty.
This represents like a thirty percent that we're giving back?
That's the seventy percent.
We have seventy thirties and we have fifty fifties.
So it's a substantial amount of money we're receiving.
It's hundreds of thousands.
The new ones are a hundred percent, but then there's a rebate which comes back as, as actually new revenue. The other, it all just comes as tax revenue.
And then their, their tax increment is actually based on the, what they call the incremental growth, so they have the base value and then the incremental growth and that growth is what gets the rebate. Um, and so there's actually tax before the incremental growth is calculated. So it's, I mean, it, each one of these brings us a fairly significant amount of, of taxes to the entities.
This is not, I'm not exaggerating, there's a billion dollars in solar panels in this, in this county.
Yeah, I mean, and Reed's not still here, but at one point it was like eight thousand acres of, of solar panels, like seven hundred, or seven, almost eight thousand megawatts, I mean it's, Iron County's a significant player in the solar.
Yeah, in the state of Utah, we definitely lead the rest of the state by far with.
Do we really?
It's kind of a, it's an unspoken, but it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah. Well, it's kind of quiet, just like they are, they just kind of sit out there and
Do that thing.
Collect sun, so, so we ready?
Yep, let's have a motion.
So this motion will uh, include items, gen items thirteen through sixteen, the first one, thirteen being tax increment reimbursement for Utah Red Hills. Uh, renewable solar project for the year of two thousand twenty one in the amount of five hundred and sixty seven thousand, seven thirty nine and fifty four cents. Fourteen, gen item fourteen, uh, tax increment reimbursement for Three Peaks Solar project area for two thousand twenty one would be seven hundred and four thousand, four sixty point nine three. Uh, agenda fifteen would be considered tax increment for Cove Mountain One, solar project two thousand twenty one in the amount of two thousand, or two hundred twenty two thousand, eight sixteen point zero zero. And number sixteen would be the reimbursement for Cove Mountain Two solar project area in the year two thousand twenty one for four hundred forty thousand, seven fifty eight point six seven.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thanks Danny.
Uh, reconvene as the Iron County Commission. And we'll have Jennifer.
Oh, um.
We'll go back to nine.
Oh, we gotta go back. I wasn't gonna go back.
That we, it's the price we pay for ha, having skipped a meeting, huh?
Yes.
It's a long agenda.
It is a long agenda, number nine. And Dan is gonna talk to us about this, the discussion and possible approval of memorandum of understanding between Iron County and Canaraville Town regarding solar waste collection and landfill fees.
So Bruce isn't here, but Bruce and I um, um, met with Canaraville, uh, with their mayor and town clerk with Heidi and um, Heidi Loveland and Betty Gold. Canaraville just had a fun growing pain of having to do their audit for the first time ever. Would, they were a small enough entity before that they didn't have to do an external audit. But all of those uh, all that revenue coming down the mountain, um, people coming in to do the, the tour put them over the threshold. So their audit that they had, Hinton Burdick did it, pointed out a, a bunch of things that they needed to do to clean up their books and things. In the middle of that, they noticed that they weren't um, charging, they were not paying the county, cause they self calculate for all of the, all of the cans that they, that this, that the town owned, the land, the, cause they, cause there's a landfill fee associated with each garbage can. So they reached out, um, it was more of an administrative change, uh, decision, we said, yeah, let's go ahead and um, we'll go back one year and get that billed. Um, Canaraville decided at that point, they've got looking, they didn't have any agreement between the county and the city as far as between the county and the town as far as what we were charging everything and they would feel a lot more comfortable if we had an MOU. So they came up with one, they were in a real big hurry to get this done and checked off the list. So I fired it over to Sam, they had an agreement, Sam came up with a, a really good looking document and they had it signed in, in their town council and signed like two days later. So, I think we're happy with it, Sam uh, did a good job on it, I will go over just some of the important things, cause we also worked out another issue. The other issue that kind of came up was the best that Bruce could figure was there was a time a while back that they were gonna do a big town cleanup and they asked us to bring some of those big, large construction dumpsters. Somehow that turned into some permanent thing where they have a, a yard and, and everybody just goes and dumps trash in those and then the county would go down and haul it off. We were doing it for free. And I mean, we haul that off once or twice a week. Right?
Once a week, I think.
Yeah. Couple times a month, it's anywhere from two to five times a month. We're hauling that off at our cost, um, Enix City was like, hey, wait, we want that same deal and they've had problems with people that didn't want to pay fees to take things that, that the landfill that were not allowed. And so they'd just take them to Canar and dump them in those things and we were hauling them off.
Canaraville monitors theirs very, very closely.
It hasn't been problems for a while.
You know, they didn't put a freezer or a refrigerator in, you know, and, and they also do all their clippings separate so that they can dispose of them.
Yeah, there had been problems and then Canaraville had gotten really tight and, and had been monitoring that. But still, we were hauling that away for free, we were, um, it was costing the county money and so we figured while we were in the middle of this MOU, we would tighten that up as well. So items A through E, real quick, we'll charge three dollars and seventy five cents per can, including the town owned cans. And that's the, that's the rate that we charge all the cities and towns. And then they, we, we actually encourage them to charge a fee above that, so they usually charge four dollars and then they keep that twenty five cents um, for their own administrative costs and so this, this contemplates that. Um, and then Bruce, uh, he, he got down and did some calculations as to what the annual cost of the county to go pick up those um, big roll off um, containers and came up with a number of fifty two hundred dollars per year that we will bill to Canaraville on a quarterly basis, so that's thirteen hundred dollars a quarter. My office will bill that. Town agrees that the transfer station will only be used by Ta, by Canaraville Town residents, that was another issue, we had people from Cedar going down, we had um, other county residents wanting to go in, so we just says, listen, this will be a Canaraville thing, this is what we'll charge you. And the town agrees to police the area to make sure there's no illegal dumping, they have posted signs and they do have a transfer station attendant that works certain operational hours. So this basically just um, puts that into an agreement, pretty much boilerplate stuff after that, that lets us get out of it or let them get out of it or, or renew it or do whatever need to do, um, any, anything I did cover.
Let's have my office do the billing where we do all the other billing, I mean, that's, that's really.
Do you do the billing for?
All the other cans.
We do billing for commercial, we do billing for.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
So we bill a lot of things that you don't bill, but when it comes to these,
Right.
let's be consistent, perfect. No, I didn't wanna take over anything.
Figure that out, I just, no, I just, it would be dumb to muddy those waters.
When I was talking about the billing, I just meant the annual fifty two hundred dollars. You wanna bill that as well?
Let's talk it through, but.
Okay.
I, I.
Cause we take, we bill um, Bryanhead, we do that back and forth with Bryanhead on theirs.
Well, if you do that, then that's fine, I, as long as we're consistent.
We don't wanna, we, we certainly don't wanna get involved in the utility billing at all. We'll figure that out. Figure that out.
The loser gets it.
That'd be a wimpy.
Yeah, as long as we're consistent.
Yeah, okay, but that's it, is, is, aren't there's any questions? Bruce, Bruce did all the legwork on that.
Yeah, yeah, that was a good thing to get resolved, we didn't really know that it was an issue, but it was. So that's, Bruce worked through that and that was good.
And I don't know if we have an MOU with all the cities, we do with Bryanhead with that agreement, but anytime we have, we have resources going back and forth and things like that, you know, a good, good fence makes good neighbors, so.
Yeah, yep, yep. Okay, can we get a motion?
Move for approval of memorandum of understanding between Iron County and Canaraville Town regarding solid waste collections, landfill fees, uh, clerk's office will handle the billing unless they duke it out and figure something else better.
Well, we will continue down the same path with, as with other municipalities, or whoever loses their.
Or whoever loses the fight.
We get a second on that? Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to ten, discussion of possible approval of local consent permit of the beer license for Silver Peak Supplies and who's gonna, oh, is there somebody here that?
I think it's gonna be me.
Okay. That's uh, in Newcastle.
I don't even know how to respond to that.
Soda nerd makes, makes a mean hot dog, maybe they should sell a mean beer with it.
Shut me down, I don't even know what to say, okay. Not associated with the soda nerd. This, this is a local consent permit, this is required uh, by the the State Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, uh, the, the, the local municipality approve uh, this before they will. Um, this is a once off event. And it is actually out on Highway fifty six. They've, they've kind of been working on this for a while, they've had it once before, we actually had a little bit of a complaint from neighbors about dust uh, but it is quite rural, I mean, it is, it is in Newcastle Valley, north of fifty six. And so I don't, I, I think they have some more things to work through on their event permit. Uh, but uh, this didn't seem like it was gonna be a concern.
I guess we could have a motion.
Hey, I will uh, move to, move to approve the local consent permit, off premise beer license for Silver Peak Supply. Twenty one East Highway fifty six, Newcastle, Utah.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we can have Jennifer. We kind of mixed it all up today.
I'll go fast too. Alright, thank you. Uh, first in the Sheriff's Office Corrections, Ethan Boosie, I believe is the correct pronunciation, was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting process to backfill the full-time Deputy One position effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty two. Um, in the Sheriff's Office, Office Patrol from a request from the sheriff, um, he's expressed the necessity for his office to rely on K nine officers and would like to have them be on an on-call basis with associated pay for one wink per month. And as it is for now, um, just for reference, those employees are receiving a stipend for the care of the dog as well as um, an increase for their certifications. He's just requesting for them to um, can, be considered for an on-call basis as well.
What, do you know what that amount is for the on-call?
And I asked that this morning and I did not get an answer, so I apologize for that, I'm usually more prepared, but I'll get that to you if you wanna talk about it and table it for next time, that's up to you. I should know that and I did not write it down, so, that's on me. Um, do you want me to go to the next?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Request for approval for promotion for Joy Meyer from part-time Secretary One to a full-time Secretary Two, which is a backfill of a vacant position effective day April seventeenth, twenty twenty two. In the Assessor's Office, Latonya Heaton has completed her, uh, new certification and is eligible for um, a promotion from a full-time trainee appraiser to a full-time apprentice appraiser, effective day April third, twenty twenty two. And last, um, Jerry Torcel has been selected to transfer from a part-time DMV technician to a full-time DNT, DMV technician in the Cedar City offices, effective date April seventeenth, twenty twenty two.
I'm just curious, so, and I'm just thinking back to my days of, like, our, my on-call schedule with Cedar PD. I think when we were the on-call detective, I think it was like a it was like a dollar a day?
Oh my heck.
I mean, it was, I mean, I, I'm well, it, it was about, I think it was like eight hours of, it, it was like eight hours of overtime per week.
Per week.
Was what the, was what the on-call, I mean, it was minimal, it, it was a minimal, I mean, I think when you, the week that you're on-call, you put on for an, you, you put in for an extra, I think it was eight hours of overtime for that week that you were on-call, so I mean, it was a minimum, I'm just curious as to what the proposed.
What figure that costs, and that's why I, I was hopeful the sheriff was gonna be here today to talk about it, so.
That's kind of a.
Would you feel more comfortable to wait on that one?
Just so we have the answer.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I just, I mean, is the proposal eight hours of overtime a week or is it a thousand bucks a week?
I think it's a whole week, so.
I know it's not that, I'm sure it's a lot more reasonable than that, but I'd like to know what it is.
Would it mess them up to table that one item till next time?
Nope.
Okay.
Not in my opinion, but.
That's probably a good idea.
I'm the only one answering the questions.
I would be more comfortable just tabling that one, just
Then get back to it.
And I'll get more information for you.
Just to attach a dollar amount to it like we do everything else.
Good with that.
Okay. Very good, well, let's have a motion for B and C then.
Okay, I would move for approval of items A one, B two, C one and two and move to table item B one until uh, next commission meeting and revisit that.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Alright, do we have any prairie dog hmm, issues? That we need to talk? No? Any coun, county board positions?
No.
Alright, well, I.
Um, before you close,
Oh, okay.
would you like me to remove prairie dogs? It's been on there for quite some time. And, and, and it was.
You might have to have some kind of ceremony.
Oh, of contention. Mike has a smoker.
Should we smoke?
Smoke like prairie dogs.
Jeff, don't write that down.
Don't write that down.
That's going in the paper, okay.
Probably could, I'm thinking.
Okay.
We'll smoke something, we'll smoke something that's not on the endangered species list. To uh, to commemorate the removal of the prairie dogs from the general. Smoke a non-protected.
Species.
Species.
Very good.
Oh my heck.
Well, I guess we can adjourn then. Thank you everyone.
Dave, do you think we're never gonna get done?
I was beginning to wonder.